Call this meeting of the Housing Authority for the City of Salem for Monday, December 9, 2019 to order. The recorder will call the roll, please.
Vice Chair Kizer.
President.
Commissioner Anderson.
Likewise.
Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner Leung is absent. Commissioner Osik absent. Chair Hoi.
Here.
Commissioner Nordike.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Thank you, and I would like to invite up the Girl Scout Troop 10206 from Ward 6 up to the front to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Turn around this way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excellent. Thank you for being here. Commissioner Kizer, do we have additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, we do. We have item 3.3A, which is the authorization, approval, and ratification of an increased construction loan amount for the 54-unit Brush College and Meadowlark properties.
It's been moved. Do we have a second to approve additions? Moved by, and seconded by Counselor Nanki. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Public comment?
I'm sure if you want to speak on this.
All right. We have at least one person signed up to speak to the Housing Authority, and I just want to confirm that you actually want to speak to the Housing Authority and not the City Council. Angel Villamore?
Yeah.
Would you like to speak to the Housing Authority?
Yes, I have something to say.
Excellent. If you step up to the mic and introduce yourself, tell us your.
Hi, my name is Angel Villamore.
You have three minutes. Thank you.
I hope that the city will expand the funding for, or find a way to expand the funding for the Housing Authority, particularly when it comes to the HRAP program and the Housing First program. Basically, they really need more social workers. I hear they only have three. That's very few. And they need help to put people in permanent houses. These people, once they're stabilized, they can get all the medical help, all the psychological help, drug addiction, whatever it may be, but you've got to stabilize them. Those of you who have studied a little bit, you've probably heard of Maslow's Little Pyramid. Down at the bottom is where you start, and having shelter, a home, is down there. You can't go up if you don't have that basis. That foundation isn't there, you're never going to help those people. They're going to be running around out there forever. That's all I had to say about Housing First. Keep it in mind, folks.
Thank you. Commissioner Kizer, the consent calendar.
Thank you. I move the consent calendar. And on the consent calendar, we have item 3.1A, which are minutes from November 25th, Salem Housing Authority, and then Resolution 3.3A, which I just mentioned a moment ago.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. We have no action items, let's see, no public hearings, special orders of business, none, information reports. Ms. Utz.
Thank you. I'm Nicole Utz. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. Tonight, I just wanted to clarify, because I wasn't exactly very clear on the voucher program on the last meeting. Each of the voucher programs listed here are separate pots of vouchers that we do receive. So you were correct, and I'm not sure I was clear and wanted to follow up with you from last week stating that we do have over 3,100 vouchers currently. So all of these programs do not roll up into the top number of 2,936. That is actually a balance which is broke down on the voucher lease upside, which states 3,103 vouchers. As well in the program management report, we will be adding the mainstream vouchers that we did apply for this last fall. We were authorized to receive 75 of those mainstream vouchers, in which we did apply for these vouchers with two other program entities such as Arches and Center for Hope and Safety. So we look forward to receiving these to help another 75 individuals.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Utz? Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, President Hoi. Nicole, thank you very much for correcting that. That makes me feel even better. We've got more than we thought. Also, I'm wondering if you could tell us a little bit about the mainstream vouchers. From where did that money come, and how do you, will it just be used like other, the HUD vouchers you have, or will there be some other use for it?
Sure. So these mainstream vouchers are another section of the Section 8 program. So you see on the other side, there's what is called is the Veterans Assistance Support of Housing, Family Unification vouchers. These are all programs that we had to apply for additional vouchers to specifically be used for that program. The mainstream, we had to also come up with a plan and a program that we would be using those mainstreams to be competitive for these additional vouchers. In that process, we did work with the two different entities who did provide us letters of support. We will be accepting referrals from both Arches and Center for Hope and Safety to house those individuals that are either homeless, facing homelessness, or integrated back into the community from an institution.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. And seeing no further business, we are adjourned.
If the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Kizer.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Leung is absent. Counselor Osik is absent. Counselor Hoi.
Here.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, great.
Counselor Hoi, any additions or deletions?
No.
Okay. Any counselor comments? Counselor Anderson?
I hate to keep sounding like a broken record, but we've had another pedestrian death here in the city. This gentleman was Roderick Kenyon Drolschlager. And I may not be pronouncing that name right, but he was crossing Front Street to get to the Riverfront Park. No, he's crossing from Riverfront Park to get to the downtown area. He was in a crosswalk, he had the light, and a car made a right turn, excuse me, a driver of a car made a right turn and hit him, and he unfortunately is deceased. I have lost count, but we're probably close to 20 pedestrian deaths in the time I've been on the council, and here's the broken record part. Once or twice, it's an accident. 20 times, it's a system problem. And normally, I'm saying it's a speed problem, but I can't say it's a speed problem here, but it's, I don't know, if a sign saying watch for pedestrians or something, but this happens all too often, and we need to do something to stop it, and, you know, I'd be very interested in any suggestions we can get from the Public Works Department, or the Risk Management people, or anybody else as to how we can resolve this problem. And I'm sorry for Mr. Drolschlager and his family.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Kizer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to participate in a workshop put on by our community development staff, specifically Kimberly Fitzgerald and Historic Preservation Program, and Kristin, I think it's Kristin Strauss. Yeah. They did a great job at the Aliment Heritage Center, putting on a workshop for revisions to the historic preservation plan and the code for the city. I counted about 40 attendees on a Wednesday night, which is pretty good, and they're going to have another workshop come February, so I just wanted to give them a kudos for the good work that they're doing with revisions to the historic preservation plan. I also wanted to, if I can make a second comment. I have heard reports of, down at the campsite located around Arches, we know that there is quite a bit of accumulations of belongings there. One of the things I've heard is that there are well-intentioned people who are making donations to the site. They're not to organizations specifically, but sounds like driving to the site and kind of unloading trucks or vans worth of supplies and then just leaving them there. What that's contributing to is essentially a problem for Arches as the organization around there and other residents that they're trying to deal with this accumulation of property now. And if people want to donate things, that's great, but donate them, please, to organizations that can handle such donations. Otherwise, it's just contributing to a problem with belongings on the site that the campers down there just don't have the resources to deal with, and it's contributing just to an accumulation of more things there that ultimately end up in a dumpster. So if you want to donate, that's great, but please do responsibly. Please do it to an organization that can handle those types of donations.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I was happy to join Mayor Bennett at the holiday tree lighting ceremony last Friday night. The Public Works staff went way beyond this year, and as I drove in this evening along the park, the lights really, really make an effect. It's really nice. I want to thank the staff for putting out the extra effort this year.
Yeah, I'd like to second that, too. That was a really enjoyable evening. There were several hundred people at the tree lighting this year. Public Works and parks really went all out, and I think if you haven't been down to the park, to Riverfront Park in the evening to see the light show they have put together, it really is pretty spectacular. They really did a great job. I hope you'll share that, Mr. Fernandez, and I think we all appreciate their hard work.
I will. Mayor, I want to shout out to Jennifer Keller, our Parks Operations Superintendent, and her staff. It was really their idea to expand it and really make it beautiful, and I guess I'd nitpick with you, I thought there were closer to 1,000 people at the tree lighting on Friday.
I found you always underestimating crowds. It's smart. I also want to mention the, that tomorrow evening at 7:00 is Speak Up Salem at the Methodist Church, the downtown Methodist Church. Really suggest, counselors, if you have an opportunity, it's really a great event. Not tomorrow night?
It's not the Methodist Church.
Oh, it's St. Mark's. It's always, I'm sorry, it moved on me. It's really ecumenical. They're going from the Methodist Church to St. Mark's Lutheran. Excellent work. It's a testimony to our, to the variety, I guess, but I really recommend it. It's a great event. And thank you, Suzanne, because I'd have been standing down there at the Methodist Church wondering where everybody was. So thank you very much. Yes, Counselor Leung.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm hoping that this, the group that I'm about to recognize will be able to come to one of our upcoming meetings in January. There was a boys' group, I think they were the Island Sharks, I'm not exactly sure of their name, but they're a football, youth football league, and they were invited to go to Nationals in Canton, Ohio, and they just came back today, and I believe they won two out of three games.
Fantastic.
So I'm hoping that they'll be able to come in January so we can actually recognize them.
Absolutely. If you have anyone that the staff should contact, or if you want to just bring them in, that'd be just great. We'd love to have them here.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Today, I had an opportunity to attend the AAARP, Age Friendly Oregon Summit. I was on a panel on growing the age-friendly movement, lessons from Oregon around the nation. We heard from Governor Brown and just a whole range of really outstanding speakers on age friendly. If you recall, we have completed an age-friendly survey of the community, about 38. It's really quite an exhaustive piece of work, particularly Marilyn Daly at Senator, at Senate, Center 50 Plus did the work on it. It really was quite a good event. One of the discussions focused heavily on transportation. I'll tell you, Counselor, you want to save lives, you lower the speed limit on every street in town to 20. Every residential street goes to 20. That's really where the, they really indicated very strongly that that's where the action is. So keep that in mind.
I agree with you completely, Mr. Mayor, and we can probably expect some sort of motion like that coming up in the future. If I may comment one more, I want to concur what Counselor Kizer said. I've been told this, too, that there are a number of well-meaning folks who are dropping off items at any of the various homeless tent camps we have around the city, and that really does not help the situation. It makes it worse. So I'm not at all saying that your heart isn't in the right place by doing this, but it's much, much better to drop them off at one of the many service agencies we have in town that know how to accept things and know how to sort them out and know how to best get those items to people who are in need.
Counselor, do you, Counselor Kizer, any of you have a suggestion on some of the, I mean Salvation Army maybe, or Arches, or do you have other organizations you would mention to people?
I would say probably all of those. I mean, Arches is there, UGM, Salvation Army, I think there's Hope, there's.
Okay.
Yeah, all sorts of places that you can donate, if you want to donate clothing or what it is, whatever it is.
I also know, Mr. Mayor, that churches do this, too.
Yes.
They distribute it out. So that's the place to do it, rather than sort of ad hoc, drop things off, and you never know what happens to them.
Thank you. Okay, great. Mr. Manager? Nope. Okay. All righty, we have no proclamations, presentations, the Salem Public Art Commission Annual Report.
My name is Christine Darcy. I'm the current Chair of the Salem Public Art Commission. I live in the Fairmount neighborhood in Ward 7. Happy to speak with you tonight for our annual report. I was here a year ago for talking to some of you. Just a quick reminder, we were established by the City Council in 2010. We are guided by Salem Revised Code. We have seven volunteer commissioners. We are currently looking for one additional commissioner for vacancy. It's a spot for an architect or a landscape architect. We are responsible for acquiring public art for all of you. We are responsible for managing the city's public art collection, which includes maintenance, and that, we'll get to that, and we are responsible for managing the public art fund. I want to just call out the piece that's illustrated on this slide, a work called Equitas, a sculpture by Blessing Hancock, which will be, is a special commission, it will be installed at the new police station. We are super excited about that, and I'll get, I'll say a little bit more about that in a minute. The public art collection, what does it look like? You, we own nearly 100 works of art. Some are in this room, many are around the city. We did an appraisal a couple of years ago. The collection is now valued at about $1.37 million. So we are looking at something that is a real asset for the city. Some of the things that we've worked on are the downtown murals, which I hope some of you have seen, artists by, two Oregon artists, Damian Gilli and Blaine Fontana. The piece that's pictured on this slide is a work, a sculpture called Good Sense. It was a collaboration with the Oregon Environmental Council. They provided half the funding, the city provided the other half, and it is, commemorates passage of the Oregon's bottle bill, and by a team of Oregon artists, including one of our state's most revered Native American artists, Lillian Pitt. We are looking forward to the new work, Equitas, going in at the police station. This piece was designed, if you can mentally go back to, let's see, I'll go back. This piece was designed to have a significant public component, words, phrases that reflect the work, the mission, the purpose of the police department. So Blessing, the artist, came to Salem several times. She met with arts people, she was at the Public Works Day at Riverfront Park, she was at the Salem Art Fair. 1,000 people contributed ideas to her, and that, to me, says that the City of Salem wants public art and that people want to be involved, so we are very excited about that. We are also very much looking forward to the half a percent for art that will go into the library when it is remodeled. We have an RFP, RFQ out on the street right now. It closes on Friday. There has been an overwhelming amount of interest, so we're very, very excited to see what that is going to bring. A couple of things I want to touch on on this slide. Right now, the code calls for the application of the half a percent for art allocated in various percentages, so 70% for acquisition, 20% for management, and 10% for maintenance. We are finding that with the use of general obligation bonds for projects like the police facility and the library, that that percentage allocation does not apply. All of the money goes to acquisition, which we love, but our collection is getting older, and we actually have works that are in need of some maintenance that is going to cost a lot of money. So some of the things that we're facing are just that funding restriction in code, and we will come back to you with some suggested revisions, gifts of art with unintended consequences. So the city accepted this fabulous and very valuable piece of sculpture by Portland artist Mel Katz, and one of our, let's just say, downtown people actually attacked the work of art with a sharp object, and the piece had to be completely repainted by the artist. So that was a wonderful gift, and then we ended up having to repair it fairly quickly. And then deferred maintenance. You know, as I mentioned, our collection, which basically was started in 1972 with the development of the Civic Center, is getting older. Our climate is not super friendly to outdoor works of art. You can see that the Echo Earth Ball, which has become an iconic part of Riverfront Park, is really suffering from weather issues, and we're going to have to make some big decisions about that. And then, like, oh, somebody broke off Tom McCall's fishing rod also along the river, which we were super sad to see happen. Anyway, one of the things that we did, because we really believe in a public conversation, was to convene a public conversation back in September, and we had about 50 people, maybe over 50 people, come. We had a three-hour open house. People talked about all kinds of things. The city could use more murals. We'd like public art in our neighborhoods. Too much art is congregated, is concentrated downtown. Let's think about art in our parks. Let's think about art that reflects the cultural diversity of the city, the Native Americans who were the first people who lived here. A lot of really great ideas, so we look forward to following up with some of those and then actually finding partners, maybe, to execute some of those ideas. And finally, we are delighted that the resolution of the next location for the Salem Peace Mosaic is moving forward. We had our last meeting, the Salem Public Art Commission approved the relocation of the peace mural to the Carousel's addition, and I'm delighted that things really came together. So thank you for your support on that issue, and with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much for coming down and for the work that you and the others do on the Art Commission. I, too, am interested in the maintenance issue, and I would presume, looking at the city attorney, that we would have to change the code to change the percentages, and it sounds like you will be coming back with the recommendation, that we'd love to see it, because maintenance is important, and, you know, we count on you citizens doing good work to give us what you think is the proper balance among the three portions of that 100% of the money that you get. So thank you very much.
Counselor Lewis?
I'm going to echo Counselor Anderson's comments, and what is particularly sensitive to me is the acid ball. And I walk around the park almost every day, and I've seen the deterioration in it, and I really think that those are the things that we need to focus on, or we'll constantly go through things deteriorating to the point where they have to be taken down, so.
Well, we would agree with you completely. You know, if you, if you look at the drone photographs that are taken over the river and over Riverfront Park, that acid ball and the park walkways that lead you either to downtown or the Peter Courtney Bridge, or back into the rest of the park, you know, there, these are, that's an important design element at this point, so we hope that, we hope that we can all figure out a way to stop the deterioration and do whatever it takes to make the ball whole again. It wasn't a perfect, there wasn't perfect construction from the get-go, that's part of the problem, and the weather does not help at all.
Counselor Nordike?
Thank you so much for your presentation, for all that you and the Art Commission is doing. I very, very much appreciate it. Having grown up in Salem, I've often felt very fondly about a lot of the public art that I saw growing up, and I am just a huge art lover, so I appreciate that. Your document here includes something about murals. It says that the Commission is interested in reviewing the criteria for murals and establishing an avenue for temporary murals or installations in Salem. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yes, and I'm really glad you asked that question, because I kind of glossed over that as I made my remarks. Right now, the, right now, the city code provides that a building owner may approach the city for permission to execute a mural on his or her property. In return for that permission, the building owner will grant the city a seven-year easement on the wall of that property and agree to maintain the work. The city also, the code now requires that the mural be accessioned into the city's collection, which means that the city will have ongoing maintenance responsibilities going forward. We are just concerned that, given the existing deferred maintenance that the city already has with the collection, that maybe we could make some adjustments to the code that would allow for the murals without having the city own these pieces into perpetuity, which we think would actually be a good solution. So when, we will bring back a package of some of these code revisions to you. But when we had the community conversation, there just is, there is excitement for enlivening neighborhoods and some of our maybe more industrial areas with some murals, so we would like to make that happen for the community engagement and having just fun things across the city, but without the city having to foot the bill, you know, 25 years out. Even the Mattingly mural on the Elsinore Theater, which was just restored, I would say within the last five years, it, you know, it needs a regular maintenance program. So we just don't want to get into a situation where the city has to take on more than it can afford.
Counselor, I want to follow up with the Commissioner on a question you had of another Commissioner. Do we have a youth member on your board? Is there a young person on your board, on the Commission?
No, not at this time. Our meeting, our meetings are during the school day, so if you're suggesting a, like a high schooler, that might be a problem, but we're, we welcome all comers, and I will say, it's great, we have great attendance at our meetings.
Yeah.
We have, you know, we've had the poets, we've had the peace people, we've had the mural people, we've had people in North Salem who want more public art. It's good.
Good, okay. Yeah, I would ask, as you come back to us, too, and we talk about money, we also talk about whether you need revisions in order to open up a slot for a young person if it, if it works. I understand your timing, so, something we'd have to be careful of. So, great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Hoi, the consent calendar.
Over to you.
Oh, I walked right by it. Oh, I walked right by it. Public comment. I got some, sorry. You recall, you have three minutes to speak. The orange light comes on at two minutes, and you'll have one minute left. So pay attention, and I'll ask you at, when the red light comes on, to please stop. Councilors can ask questions. Michael Fennig?
My name is Michael Fennig. I live at 4270 Temple Way in Ward Six by McKay Park. And I'm here to probably irritate some people, but that's, feels my job now, is just a citizen, being retired. But I say that the North Lancaster Association, we had a meeting last Wednesday, and the people there, we're all for the no camping. And we, especially, we like to sit and lie. And I can explain a little bit of that myself personally. But I have noticed throughout Salem, when I've been driving around, it's just not Arches that we have the campers at. We got them all over the city of Salem, breaking fences to get to places so they can camp. And, you know, I'm sorry, they cause nuisance. And what I hear, hear tonight is, you know, these donations that were, said, well, these people that do that, well, it's called enabling. That's, that's what, that's what we're doing. And the city, I just, I saw it on the Statesman Journal today, which I watched the meeting last week, and it was supposed to be discussed of finding public property to put these people in. Well, it came out in the Statesman Journal this afternoon that the city wants to put them at Wallace Marine Park, Cascade Gateway Park, or Marion Square. Portable toilets, $2,500. $1,500 for garbage. $400 for each tent, how many that holds. $20,000 for permanent fencing or $500 a month. And it would cost the city $1 million a year to run the place. Question is, where's that money coming from? Are we going to have another vote like we are in May about income tax to support the police? You know, where's, where's this coming from? So I think, you know, people have to realize, well, what's, what's this? The citizens of Salem are going to get money, money, money. And, you know, I'm sorry, I'm retired now. I don't make as much as I used to. You know? But it's just terrible. And the other thing, I don't know how many businesses have been polled downtown, how this affected their businesses, but I can tell Oregon Dental Studios at 205 Shemekah Street, on Shemekah and Front Street. And there's another building, business right in that same building, some furniture desk company. Well, my dentist is at Oregon Dental Studios. They no longer sit there anymore, because my dentist, talking to him, he's tired of losing business, he's scared for his employees, and he's been chased with a machete because of homeless people around the corner on Front Street. And the lady at the business there, he told me that she was chased with a knife.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Oh, I don't get five minutes in Neighborhood Association?
No, that's on land use.
Oh, okay.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Lynell Wilcox?
Hi, I'm Lynell, and I know other people are going to be talking about the camping ban.
Which ward are you from, Lynell?
Ward, Ward One, Caris.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. I'm going to talk about the staff report, because I was really concerned about a sentence that talks about shelters having capacity for people as one place for people to go. And just as a homeless advocate, I'm often helping people to try to get into shelters. And my experience has been that it's really hard to get in. There's wait lists. You have to call daily or show up daily and see if there's space, and it takes a while. But I thought, well, maybe my experiences are just a reflection of the exception and not the rule. So I called shelters. I've done this in the past, but I haven't checked with them for a while. But I called them today, and Samanka House shared that they have beds for 90 women and kids. Today, they have 70 women and 27 kids there. They have space for up to 25 mats that are offered to people on an emergency basis when it's 32 degrees or less. They are full on a daily basis, and they turn away an average of 150 women per month. UGM has beds for 150 men. They have space for 48 mats. They offer those nightly in wintertime, and they're at capacity almost every evening. They said, you know, there's going to be some times where there's beds or mats open, but in general, they're at capacity. I wasn't able to reach the Salvation Army, yet I'm in that area a lot. I'm at Inside Out regularly, and I go by the Salvation Army, because they post in the window how many vacancies they have every day. And every day that I'm there, it's either zero or one, usually zero. It's rare that they post any opening, and when they do, it's usually space for either one man or one woman. It's taken, when I'm trying to get people to get into Salvation Army, it can take weeks of them checking daily before they can get in. So I know that's just one piece of, like, where can people go? But shelters really aren't the option when they're so often at capacity. And then warming centers, they're only going to be an option for people when it's 32 degrees or lower and there's enough volunteers. So combined with emergency mats on coldest nights and the shelters, they'd have space at First Pres Friends, Capital Park, and Church at the Park for like 213 people, plus mats at Samanka and UGM would be 286. And Samanka and UGM are usually full. So I'm wishing that we would have a delay on a camping ban until after, after winter, after the weather, after the holidays, when springtime will have some more opportunities. Even then, it would just be a Band-Aid. It won't solve anything, but it would at least give people a place to go at no additional cost. And maybe having selective implementation, so that if people are out of the downtown area and their camps are tidy and their behavior is appropriate.
Thank you, Lynell, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, go ahead, Jackie, you want to?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Hi, Lynell, a couple of questions. One, you mentioned three specific shelters that seem to be full. Are those the only three that you know about, or are there others you didn't get a chance to call yet?
There are other shelters that I do intend to call. I think they're, I've called them in the past, and their program requirements are more specific, so it's not as if those shelters would necessarily serve individuals that are often homeless on the streets.
And if I can, that brings up my second question. What would be your definition of service resistant?
Oh, that's really hard. I think that it's, it's the wrong question. I think sometimes trauma affects people and addiction, and brain changes happen more than I ever realized until I started working in this field. And I think there's a difference between saying, you know, service resistant versus somebody just not yet being there. And that's where Housing First can really help people have the stability to get to that point. So I think there's a difference between being service resistant and not, and just literally not having the capacity to pursue services yet. So in providing some stability first could enable people to pursue the services. And a lot of people like Inside Out and other, and Arches and other places that I'm talking to, as they develop relationships with individuals, it's common that over time, the trust and the relationships are built so that people would pursue the services. So I feel like it's like, it's a question, but it's almost the wrong question.
Okay.
Okay, let me, okay, let me, this, hopefully this won't be the amendment to the wrong question. Of the folks that, and maybe we have different definitions or the ability to ask the question correctly, but of the folks that we're talking about, what percentage of the homeless is that?
Of, what percent of what people?
Of the total homeless population, which is estimated at around 1,700. What percentage would you say are, you know, I'll use your word, just unable at this particular point to seek out service?
I think even that, it's, it's not the wrong question. To me, even that, it, it comes into how we define connected to services. Even individuals who are not on a housing list yet or aren't pursuing recovery or mental health treatment, they're usually connected to Arches or UGM or Hope for lunches, for laundries, for showers. So they're connected to, most of them that I've met, and I can only speak to that, Jimmy might know other numbers, but almost everyone that I meet is connected to some of the service providers, and they're accessing services on a regular basis. It just might not be the services that will get them job-ready or, you know, actually moving forward in the more significant ways until they have more stability to be able to pursue those. Does that sort of answer the question?
If you say so, it does.
It's like, I think they're connected to services, but if the real question is, when are those individuals going to move forward in the ways that we would haul Hope for, there's probably more healing and stabilization that's needed. But many of them are already connected to the service providers.
Councilor LeYoung?
Just one quick follow-up question. You had mentioned that there was a shelter that turned away about 150 women per month. Which shelter was that one?
Samanka.
Samoka, thank you.
Thank you very much. Scott Russell?
It's apparent to me that the city lacks...
Could you give us your name and ward? Put your mouth...
Oh, my name is Scott Russell, and Ward Three.
Okay, thank you.
It is apparent to me that the city lacks the budget and staffing to sustain any designated camping sites within Salem. Yet the articles I've read lead me to think that if designated camping areas can be done effectively, it would be, it would take more time, work, planning, and training than we can accomplish in a few weeks or even a couple of months. Rushing in will only make things worse. For that reason, I urge you to consider two alternate options. Delay implementation of the camping ban until spring 2020. At that point, we'd be past winter weather, and there will be more housing options available to unsheltered individuals. Arches might have extended hours by then. Safe Sleep United would probably have more capacity for unsheltered women to sleep by then. Or if a camping ban is not delayed till spring, then instead of designating areas for camping, consider areas where the camping ban would be implemented reactively instead of proactively. Criteria for reactive camping ban implementation might be that camps are tidy, out of plain view, away from rivers, creeks, and behaviors that are not disruptive. Perhaps Cascade Park fits that description, as well as remote camps people might set up out of plain view. This option will allow for people to camp out of sight, as long as littering is not happening, as long as behavior is appropriate. Both of these options require no additional funding from the city. I am also requesting an edit to allow temporary small shelters. Existing ordinance, ordinance language would seem to ban any shelter that has a roof and at least one enclosed side. Whether or not we have designated camping areas, some people will still need to sleep outdoors away from camps, and will need shelter from the elements. Please consider language that will allow people to have a pub tent or other small shelter, as long as it's taken down and put away by 7:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Angel?
Hi, I'm Angel Villamore, and I believe I'm in Ward One. So basically, I came here on behalf of the people that are living out of their vehicles. I hope that the city will designate a safe, hygienic place for these people to live in their vehicles. I personally know of at least 10 of them personally, and I know of seeing them probably a lot more. They may, may live in vans, cars, pickup trucks, you name it. So I wanted to say I really hope that you folks can find a place, designate a place that has bathrooms for them, that they won't be harassed all over the place, because they, right now, they can't be anywhere. So they're constantly being flushed out of here, then they move somewhere else, and then they get flushed out of there, and they're, the only safe places they have are known as rest stops. But they're very far away, and these people have limited income. And usually, they wind up begging for money or stuff like that, which isn't good for them, and kind of, overall, it's not a good thing. So I recommend that the city find a place for these people with vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Ross, Rossland?
My name is Daniel Rossland. I'm a retired professor from Willamette University and a Salem resident for 33 years, currently living in Ward Two. I apologize in advance if I'm echoing what others have already said, but hopefully I'll supplement it a little bit. An overwhelming majority of Salem residents who testified at the last two city council meetings opposed ordinance 1019 because it effectively criminalizes homelessness in our city. But you passed it anyway unanimously, without offering a realistic, workable alternative. The new law mandates that our unsheltered homeless pull up stakes in one week and wander about looking for a place where they can legally camp. The staff report issued today claims that there are shelter spaces available on most nights. Salem has approximately 330 emergency shelter beds. However, according to the 2019 point-in-time count, 304 of those beds were occupied, leaving 26 emergency shelter beds available for the 503 unsheltered people per the pit account. Recognizing this disparity, United Ways Partnering to Build a New Women's Shelter and United Gospel Mission will be adding 150 shelter beds in its new facility. But these won't be ready for between five months and two years, respectively. Echoing what Scott recommended recently, I strongly ask that you delay enforcement of the ordinance until these shelter beds come online. Do not uproot our unsheltered citizens and turn them out into the winter weather with no good alternatives. The city of peace needs to become the city with a heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Right, thank you very much. Ross Schwarzenbruber?
Good evening, Council Ben, Mayor Bennett, excuse me, and councilors. My name is Ross Schwarzenbruber. I live two miles outside of town, do a lot of business in town. I'd like to address 5A and B today. And right now, we're kind of going through another Gilded Age, and it might be good for people to take a look at policies that were enacted in the Gilded Age. And so if you do a little bit of spelunking in the internet, you can pull up a lot of history from the Statesman, and you'll find out that Salem had one of the very few municipal auto parks where people could camp. It was located Pringle Car, Pringle Community Park, right next where the hospital was. Here are a few news item headlines from the effort. Tourist Camp Business Brings Large Sum of Cash to City. Keep Auto Park Forum Verdict. And so everybody was really for this auto camp. Auto Camp of Salem is unique. Cotages Pay Builder, Cotages Pay Builder fines. They were so popular that they had private businessmen spend their own money and get rental money from this auto park. So Parks was making money, and people were trying to spend that tax money other than improving the park. Interesting. Erect More Tents at City Auto Park was editorial. Salem Auto Camp Does Big Business. And essentially, people were traveling with, looking for a new home... And essentially, people were traveling with, looking for a new home, and we set them up to find property. So the Salem Chamber of Commerce was a big proponent of this. Also, the Realtors, if you look there, Realtors want auto park kept. The only people who were opposed to it were the other private park owners outside of town and, of course, the hotel men. Hotel Men Oppose City Campground. Tourist Camp Improvements Urged by Page. And what happened to these people? Well, it was really interesting because, because of the Gilded Age, we had all the pressure from federal policy and state policy that the city had to deal with. And so everybody got sent off to concentration camps at Mahama and To Moalala and to the C.C.E. camps. This was in 1934. What I would recommend is you look at what we've done previously and also target the TOT fund. Portland just opened up TOT funding for homelessness. I think that would be a great opportunity. And also, before you create another tourist district, we need a bathroom downtown and we need to facilitate this.
Thank you, Ross. Thank you. Any questions? Angelina?
Hello. It's known by most that we don't have enough apartments and houses to house every houseless person in Salem. We can rapidly build up small home villages. We can also do what the company BioFusion is doing in New York and turn our plastics into construction blocks. They call theirs RePlast Blocks, which are as strong as cinder blocks but much lighter. This can divert a lot of our plastics away from the incinerator and dump while providing building materials for new homes for the houseless. I recommend that you have a few locations for the camps around the city. One should be female and children only, one should be men only, one should be families, one open to everyone. Find the current camp leaders and pay them to do what they already do, keep the peace. Pay a couple people to clean the camps. This allows people to have income to help them get out of the current situation that they're in while providing extra incentives to keep the camps safe and clean. I don't know if your plan to move everyone currently downtown to the camp sites in less than a week is actually doable. You would need a couple of big raids to load all their belongings and a couple of buses to drive the people. You have to get those people to trust you enough to move their stuff and know that they will actually get it back. If you don't help them move their things, it will take weeks to get everyone moved and lots of resistance. It's already reminding me about the Trail of Tears, moving people that, what can be seen as reservations. Let's make sure that this doesn't really repeat history. I want this to be a good compromise for everyone. I believe it can be done with effort on all sides. A new houseless commission needs to be put together to find a real solution to the homeless problem because this is just a temporary fix. The new houseless commission should be made up of counselors, representatives from organizations that help the houseless and formerly and current houseless people. You can't help a group of people without asking them what they need help with. As for the sites that are listed on here, all but three are not good at all, and only one has transit services, water, and emergency vehicle services. And number four, five, and six are the only okay ones that I see on here. They need to do better. And whoever put on the city council report that there's enough beds needs to do a much better job because they're lying. There is definitely not enough. So, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Angelina. Any questions? All right, Ron Sturba.
Good evening, Ron Sturba, board member with Simpkins Neighborhood Association, Ward Two and Three. I'm here tonight because the city has something really special. All of us have contributed in taxes to provide a recreational area for our community. Those are called parks. They're gems in this city. We have, we're presently investing, and we're planning those parks for our communities. After looking at the list, I believe that the city didn't just consider all parks, which I believe they should have, to single out one or two parks throughout the city, to me, was the person who put together, or the group who put together this list and said, "Not in my neighborhood, let's put it over there." And I don't think that's fair. Every park should be a safe area for a family to go ahead and have an activity, be recreational in that area, without concerns of people who may be camping or have a camp. Now, as my wife and I have mentored the Union Gospel Mission under the direction of George Samanka, I sure learned a lot. And what this city needs to do is to find out who's coming to this city for services. Did they ever live here before? You'd be surprised. We were, from the Midwest. Nice gentleman, great. He went through the services that the city has offered and the Union Gospel Mission and became a manager at an oil change area in central Oregon. That was an accomplishment. It is there. We saw that man come from the ground and go up and use the services. Now, you remember the eclipse of 2017? Everybody came. You announced that you have parks that have homeless camps in it, and this city's going to be inundated. We have to tell these folks, use the facilities and the services that are given to them presently in the city. We do not need to open up the city and say, "Come, because we have camping." It's not right. We need them to go to their communities. I spoke with a lady downtown who was getting food out of a dumpster. I went ahead and bought her food and talked with her. She did not want my food. Why? She was pulling the vegetables out of the dumpster. She was vegetarian.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you very much.
As a neighborhood association, do I get now five?
Three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You bet. But if it's land use, if we were doing a zone change, we'd listen to you for five and appreciate every minute of it. Thank you. Okay, that's the last person I have signed up. Yeah? Come on down. Pamela, are you going to speak too? Go ahead and talk into the mic, give your name and ward in three minutes.
Sarah Parkinson, Highland Neighborhood. I have six answers for you about why people don't use the shelters, and I'll be happy to engage those on another three minutes, but right now, I have my own stuff. I'm looking at this list in terms of the camping, and I believe that on the Marion Square Park, that the two places that there are no Xs, which one is the proximity to residential, I think an X there is to be intended because there's no residential around there. I may be wrong about that. And also with the flood plain, it's not in a flood plain. So that puts Marion Square Park with Xs all the way across. Couple weeks ago, I said, "We've been here before." Yep, we have, and I have the report from them that the city council was engaged in. That would be making after-school count. You can go through this report. This was 1998. We started it in 1990, I believe. You can go through this report.
Could you speak into the mic so we can hear?
I'm sorry. You can go through this report, and anywhere in it that it says youth, you can pretty much take out and put homeless, because they experienced the same, I don't know what to call it, that we're seeing with the homeless get from people that are afraid of them. It was our kids. Priority issues here, this is strategic directions adopted by the youth compact. Scratch that and make homeless compact. Government is not necessarily the primary choice for providing programs or activities for the, scratch, youth homeless in our communities. It must work in partnership with community organizations to support and enhance the work of those organizations. There's also, of the priority issues, those related to the youth we are not rationing, the homeless. Built on existing capacity and resources. We had $103,000, I believe, million dollars to do the youth, Level Seven Youth Problem in Salem. When all of that money was distributed to all the normal groups, there was 67, 67, $58,000 left, it cost at that time, $64,000 to put another police car on the street. Today, we are celebrating the 25-year anniversary of Home Youth and Resource Center. It's still here. It's expanded. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
And I've got six answers for you if you want them.
Thank you. Pamela?
I have a series of comments that are pretty unrelated to each other. The first one comes from the last meeting. We heard that there were urban development funds that were unassigned. The discussion seemed to be, do we use those retro to projects that have already been submitted? And if not, what do we use these for? And I'm not sure that I ever heard the answer as to where those go.
And we'll stop the clock for a second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Kristen.
Just quickly to clarify, I believe that you're referring to the unspent urban renewal dollars within the Fairview Urban Renewal Area, and those can only be used within the urban renewal boundary for projects identified in the plan.
Okay, do those have to be limited to Fairview, then?
Yes, yes. They cannot be used anywhere in the city.
They can't be used anyplace else in the urban renewal area.
They can be used within the Fairview Urban Renewal Area.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, I got it. Okay. And those, and there may be things in the Fairview Urban Renewal Area that apply, ways to use those funds to alleviate our problem. For example, a car park area, it isn't suitable for camping because it's too far from anything else at all, but if you have a vehicle, it might be a suitable use for some of those, and that would eliminate part of the problem. Thing two I want to say is, I've had the, to use a tripe phrase, great good fortune of doing some travel. All throughout Europe, what I see are public restrooms on street corners, not unlike what we see at Jamison Park in Portland, not at all unlike those. Those are not vandalized, they're kept clean. The issue of public porta-potties and why they didn't work here seems to be many-faceted, but I've talked to enough homeless people to know that when they go to use a porta-potty, and it's absolutely filthy because it didn't get emptied and cleaned often enough, the frustration builds and they do some things that are pretty unpleasant in there. And so the problem of not cleaning them an adequate number of times in the week or not having enough to last a full week porta-potties to last to service them is something that is very solvable, but I don't think we need to put it completely back on the homeless population for doing destructive vandalizing of those things. Okay, so that comes to the next thing. When I was in Italy, but this also is in France and Spain, as I was going around, there was no drug use in their porta-potties, and there are plenty of drugs in Europe. Do you know why? Because they put blue lights in the porta-potties, and you can't find your veins with a blue light on. So a very simple little fix took care of one of the problems that we have here that they don't seem to have in Europe. Okay, so next unrelated thing, although it does have to do with porta-potties, is that I'm aware of a small and very growing number of churches who are willing to be approached to do the porta-potties, to support the porta-potties.
Alrighty, very good. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yes.
Thank you so much, your testimony. I appreciate it. I agree that there's no easy solution to our homeless problem. A multifaceted approach, one that takes into account temporary as well as permanent solutions, is something that we should all look at. You mentioned at, just at the end of your testimony, about some churches being interested in supporting porta-potties. I'd like to hear a little bit more about that.
I go to St. Tim's Episcopal Church. Okay, I was on the Missions Commission. Last year, at some point, I proposed to the Missions Commission, of course, I talked to other people, I knew this was going to be supported, about supporting, about providing a porta-potty to some place where there would be a temporary, what, structured parking area, something. And that was approved, but because the program that had to do, I don't know what happened to it, it disbanded, we never actually allocated the money. But there is a lot of willingness still to do that. I've talked to two or three other churches where they have done a similar thing. Some of them have combined with another church to say, "We would like to fund a porta-potty." This is a pretty manageable, small thing that has a huge impact, and parishioners want to do this. There's a downtown church who has proposed a safe parking area that has also been involved in saying, "We will provide this porta-potties." And these are all just things that I've run across. So this is not an uncommon thing. It is a sort of a popular thing that seems to be making the rounds, and I would like to have it explored because if we put blue lights in them and keep them clean, we're likely to have a much better result. Incidentally, I know we sent our porta-potties someplace else and they don't seem to be having the problems we did.
Counselor Lewis?
Just one clarification question. The churches that are interested in the porta-potties, does that include the process of keeping them clean?
The process of keeping them clean is the responsibility of the company that provides the porta-potty, not the people who pay for the company to put them someplace. So the answer is maybe, maybe not. I don't know how you're, I don't exactly know what your question is on that one.
Well, I'm assuming that there's a cost for the porta-potty itself, and we know there's a cost for cleaning it. If the company that sells the porta-potties does the cleaning, then that's the total package.
Yeah, it is, it seems to be, and I could be wrong about this, I don't know if this, if anybody else has any information on this, but when we investigated, it sounded like to us that when you rent a porta-potty, it comes with a cleaning schedule.
Okay.
That's my information. I could just be repeating lies, who knows? Okay.
Thank you very much.
We saw another.
Thank you, Pamela.
I thought I saw another, okay.
Okay, anyone else? Come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. My name is David Messera, and I'm with the Church at the Park right on Turner Road Southeast. And I've been working with the homeless population now since the early 2000s. And what I'm seeing and have seen just recently with the proposed ban, the sit-ly, tensions have risen. I've seen people with injuries and women with black eyes. This hasty move towards a camping ban is just going to make things worse. I've had people that reported vandalism of their camps, not just by other homeless folks, but by individuals that were state employees. And I think that the whole idea behind this is just criminalization of existence and the very fact that a human being isn't allowed to occupy space. We all have that right, and I think it's very unfair to impose on people- And I think it's very unfair to impose on people the, just the audacity of chasing someone out into the open just seems unforgivable to me. And I see what's going to happen. I don't know if you've had any foresight or foresaw on this, but if this ban is imposed, you're going to create another situation like we had when we had these sweeps earlier this, this past summer, where there's going to be more violence, more anger, and more damage to these folks. And they've already had enough in their lives to cause them to be in the situation that they're in. And I'm also homeless as well, and I have been for the last two years. And I've struggled with this for the entire time. It's not an easy thing to deal with. And I have done everything I possibly can to help people that are in a worse situation than I am. And all I can do is have more and more of an outpouring for these folks because the more I see them try and struggle, the more I try to help them. And I have brought some of them along considerably, some of them are housed now. I've worked towards trying to get people into programs, and it's not an easy thing to do. And yes, there are some that were resistant to wanting to get involved with programs or be housed, but these are the ones that need and require more time. This isn't something that you rush into, just like anything. Treatment takes time, it's not something that just happens overnight. So, I hope you'll reconsider this ban because of the fact that all I see is more violence and more anger as a result of it, so.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we'll move on then, the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have approval of the consent calendar.
We have some polls.
Sorry, I've got a couple of polls off of the consent calendar. Item 3.3A by Counselor Nanki, 3.3B by Counselor Anderson, and item 3.3C by Counselor Lewis.
Lewis, okay. What's left?
So, that leaves us with the November 25, 2019 draft city council minutes, the December 2, 2019 draft city council minutes, and item 3.3D, which would authorize the subordination of two Home Investment Partnership Act rehabilitation deferred payment forgivable loans for Community Resource Trust located at 2540 Rose Garden Street Northeast.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, we will move on to our public, to our public hearings.
The city council will now conduct a public hearing to consider the annexation of territory located at 4696 Center Street and 592 Heil Lane Northeast. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by the testimony from the following. The applicant's limited to 10 minutes, the applicable neighborhood association is limited to five minutes, other interested parties are limited to three minutes, and the applicant may have up to seven minutes rebuttal testimony, limited to issues raised during the public testimony.
Alrighty.
Good evening, I'm Pamela Cole, case manager for the proposed annexation and the concurrent comprehensive plan change and zone change designations. I request that the staff report, all attachments, tonight's presentation, and the planning commission record be entered into the official record. This is an annexation with the proposed change in land use designations. The current Salem area comprehensive plan designation is multi-family in the northern part and developing residential in the southern part. Current zoning Marion County Urban Development. Proposed changes are to multi-family residential comprehensive plan for the southern part and RM2 multiple-family residential 2 zoning for the entire territory. Territory annexed into the city is automatically given a city comprehensive plan designation and zoning designation equivalent to the applicable county designations in table 260-1, unless there are certain circumstances. One is that the petitioner requests a new comprehensive plan designation or a zone change that's other than what's equivalent in the table. In this case, the applicant's requesting RM2 for the entire territory, which is different than the RA residential agriculture or RS equivalent designation to the county urban development zoning. Another circumstance is that the equivalent designation in table 260-1 is inconsistent with the Salem area comprehensive plan. In this case, the county urban development zoning is equivalent to RA or RS, and that's inconsistent with the current designation of multi-family comp plan in the northern area and the proposed designation of multi-family for the southern area. The third circumstance is that the city council proposes a new comprehensive plan designation or zone designation. The territory is outlined here in green, it's located at 4696 Center Street and 592 Heil Lane Northeast and on some adjacent tax lots. The heavy gray line at Corden Road is the urban growth boundary, the dashed red line is the city limits, and property shaded in gray is outside city limits. Center Street's a major arterial indicated here in purple. Auburn and Greencrest and Royalty Drive Northeast, shown in orange, are collectors. And this shows that the current designation of northern property is multi-family residential and the southern is developing residential. The proposed change is developing to multi-family residential for the southern areas. There are some other multi-family designated properties, as well as single-family and developing residential in the area. The current Marion County zoning is urban development, shown here in the taupe color. The urban development zoning's inconsistent with the existing proposed multi-family comprehensive plan designations. So, the applicant's proposing a change to RM2 multiple-family residential. Other properties in the city are single-family residential and residential agriculture, and properties in the county are urban development, single-family, multi-family, public, and urban transition 5. The aerial property, or aerial view shows the subject property here again outlined in purple, and a nearby manufactured home subdivision and other residences. Senate Bill 1573, adopted in 2016, indicates that the proposed annexation may not be referred to the voters. The city of Corvallis filed a legal challenge to the new law, and we wanted to point out we had a typographic area error in the staff report. It states that the Court of Appeals has issued a decision on a court challenge from Corvallis, but it has not. That matter is still pending before the Oregon Court of Appeals. And again, although the annexation may not be referred to the voters, council does retain authority on whether to annex the territory. Staff found that the proposed annexation met the applicable criteria, including whether it's consistent with comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals, allows orderly, efficient, and timely provision of urban services, and serves the public interest. The planning commission reviewed the proposed land use designations and found that they met the applicable criteria, and they recommended that council adopt the requested designations. Their findings are attached to the annexation staff report. City department comments from Public Works indicate that the application meets the criteria for infrastructure. Fire indicates a response time of 5 minutes 8 seconds from Station 10. Public Works Parks Division says that no parkland or pedestrian access is required, and finance showed that the tax rate for the property would increase by 28 percent. The school district estimates 24 students additional for Albert, nine for Halk, and 10 for North Salem. Marion County Public Works commented on the comprehensive plan change and zone change case and said that the only access should be from Center Street Northeast and the access from 592 Heil Lane Northeast to Auburn Route should be closed. Previous comments from the Neighborhood Association include objections to multi-family designations and concerns about stormwater, including the Greencrest Drainage Ditch. Many of the comments from citizens for the planning commission hearing were related to compatibility of the proposed designations with surrounding designations. I've listed several of those concerns. Some of the comments for the planning commission hearings concerned the conceptual plan for apartments that was provided by the applicant. But note that at this time, planning commission and council are not reviewing or approving a conceptual plan. If those designations and the annexation are approved, and the applicant does seek to develop multi-family housing, the applicant would be submitting design review and site plan review applications, would have to meet the requirements of the zone, multi-family design review, and other requirements. Staff recommends that council find that petitioner signed a valid petition, determine that the annexation satisfies criteria, and adopt the order. Change the southern part comprehensive plan from developing residential to multi-family residential. Change the zoning from Marion County Urban Development to city RM2 multiple-family residential 2, and also withdraw the territory from Marion County Fire District Number 1 and East Zone Sewer and Drainage District. Council does have the option to adopt, modify, or reject the planning commission's recommendation for the land use designations. That concludes my presentation, but I am available for questions.
Great, thank you very much. Michael Robinson? Mr. Robinson, you're the applicant, is that correct?
I'm the applicant's attorney.
10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Good evening, Mayor Bennett, members of the city council. My name is Michael Robinson, I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Also with me, behind me, is Bob Sanders. Bob is the development manager for the applicant. I want to mention that the owner couldn't be here tonight. He works with an orphanage in Rwanda, and that's where he is for this first part of December. So, he wanted to make sure you knew he wasn't here because of a lack of interest, but he simply had another commitment that he thought was important. We also have our traffic engineer here tonight, if you have questions of him about the compliance with the transportation plan rule. We're here tonight to ask that the council follow the staff and planning commission recommendation. By the way, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this application, and approve the annexation with the requested conference of plan map and zoning map designations. You received a letter from the East Lane Castor Neighborhood Association today. I apologize for the lateness, but I wanted to respond to that. That's before you, I understand, in both electronic and paper form, and we got that into about 3:30. If you've had a chance to look at it, great. If you don't and have questions about what our responses are to the issues raised in the owner's letter, please feel free to ask us. And I want to emphasize, Mayor and council, if you have questions before the record closes, please ask us. That's why we're here tonight, we want to answer your questions. The other thing I want to emphasize before I talk about the approval criteria and why the staff and planning commission correctly recommended approval of this application, is our commitment to work with our neighbors and with the neighborhood association. We know we can't always satisfy our neighbors and the neighborhood association, but if this approval, that if the city council grants approval tonight, we have a subsequent public development process to go through for approval in multi-family dwellings. We told the planning commission, and we reiterate the commitment tonight, we'll meet as often as it takes to educate the neighbors, to answer their questions. If we can make adjustments to the plans we submit that make sense, we'll do that as well. But we recognize the importance of working with neighbors. It's not always a perfect solution, but we wanted to emphasize to city council our commitment to continue to do that. So, I think 10 minutes is more than I need tonight, but again, if you have questions, please ask either myself or Mr. Sanders or our transportation engineer the question. First of all, the application, as you know, is to be decided on the approval criteria, and it's based on evidence in the record. If you look at the record, and as staff found and as the planning commission found, we've satisfactorily addressed all the applicable approval criteria. All the departments submitted comments to the planning commission for them to consider. All the departments found that public facilities and services were available to satisfy and serve this area's multi-family development. Secondly, and Ms. Cole emphasizes, mentioned this, but I want to emphasize it as well, the site really has two pieces to it. There is the piece adjacent to Center Street, which is a major arterial street, then there's another piece to the south. The piece on the north, adjacent to Center Street, just west of the Manufactured Home Park, is already designated multi-family on the city's Salem area comprehensive plan. So, it's an area that the city council has looked at previously and determined that this is the appropriate location for multi-family housing. And that makes sense, it's adjacent to an arterial street. The piece behind that, more northerly piece, is not so designated, and we're asking the city council to follow the planning commission's recommendation and change that designation. That piece only abuts the Manufactured Home Park by two lots in its southwest corner. So, the piece that I think most of our neighbors are concerned about is that northerly piece that's designated for multi-family, that's the piece just west of and really abutting the majority of the Manufactured Home Park. Most of the issues before the city council have to do with compatibility, and I attached my final written argument to the planning commission to the letter I gave the council tonight principally because it went into depth about why the two uses are compatible. Let me just make a couple of points. First of all, and I think the staff report and the planning commission recommendation do this nicely, even though this is going to be an RM2 zone and the maximum height is 50 feet in that zone, these are three-story buildings, they're going to top out at about 35 feet. That's the same height that's allowed in either the RS or the RA zoning district. And the other thing is, notwithstanding that we have, we have only good things to say about Manufactured Home Parks, that they're a great way for people to live. Regardless of what you put to the west, almost any house, two-story house or townhomes, which are also allowed in the RS or RA zoning districts, those are going to be higher than the single level Manufactured Home Parks. The other thing to note, and this is just factual, we're to the west, we're not to the south, and so, we're not going to block sunlight. And the point I want to make is, we think by buffering, and the staff report makes this point as well, by buffering, by following the requirements of the RM2 zoning district, we'll provide appropriate buffers with our neighbors to the east. We're not going to do anything which would render the use incompatible. But it almost is a given that in these days, you're going to have multi-family next to single-family homes. It's appropriate, provided it's done right, and that's why I started our presentation by reemphasizing our commitment to talk with the neighbors and to meet with them as we go through the development processes. I also want to point this out, and this is going to be almost impossible for you to see, but in the record is a conceptual site plan that we provided. And what's important about it is, with respect to the piece of property, I hope you're looking, with respect to the piece of property adjacent to Manufactured Home Park, virtually all of the buildings are moved to the west with one exception. But we've used parking and access to butt up against the Manufactured Home Park where possible. We've got most of the buildings off to the west. There is one adjacent here, but as I said, because of the Royal Court width, because of the setbacks on their side, and then because of our buffering setbacks, you actually have a pretty good distance between the structures. One other thing I want to mention, one of the issues that you have to address as an approval criteria is, have there been alterations in that area that justify this change? Staff found that there had been, based on the evidence we submitted, and based in part on the city's 2015 housing needs analysis. And that shows that there's a fairly large deficit of area needed for multi-family units, both in terms of acreage and units. There's also, conversely, a large surplus of single-family homes. So, providing this area for multi-family homes helps make up the deficit the city has for multi-family homes. And let me, let me just read to you a couple of sentences from a July 1, 2019 report to the planning commission from Eunice Kim. It's entitled "Update on Multi-Family Development." On the last page, under the heading "Background," it states, quote, "The housing needs analysis found that Salem's portion of the urban growth boundary has a projected 1,975-acre surplus of land for single-family housing and a projected 270-acre deficit for multi-family housing. Under state law, the city can't adopt the HNA without also addressing this deficit." This is part of the city's effort to address that deficit. It provides additional multi-family housing in the right location, where all the city departments have indicated that appropriate city facilities and services can be provided. So, I apologize for running through that so quickly. I think the planning commission recommendation is very thorough, as are the two staff reports made to the planning commission. I commend them to you because I think they provide the evidentiary basis that the city council needs to follow the recommendation and approve this application. So, let me end with these two statements. Please ask us questions, again, that's why we're here, and in rebuttal, we'll try and answer any questions the public ask. And secondly, we ask that you follow your planning commission's well-reasoned recommendation and approve the application that you have before you. Mayor Bennett, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Robinson. Are there any questions on this? Yes, Counselor?
Thank you so much for your time. You said that the planning commission unanimously voted in favor. Were there any concerns that you addressed with them before obtaining that unanimous vote?
Thank you, Counselor, and I apologize, I can't see your nameplate.
It's okay.
We addressed a couple of concerns. One is- One is the planning commission correctly was concerned about our commitment to meet with the neighbors, and we reemphasized several times during the second evidentiary hearing that we would meet with the neighbors, we'd reach out to them. And I think they're rightly concerned about that. When you have development coming in adjacent to your property, you want to make sure the applicant understands that they need to be a good neighbor. Secondly, I think the planning commission was interested in the departmental comments. They wanted to make sure that things like sanitary sewer, water, transportation, stormwater were available to serve the site. The answer in the form of memorandum from the Public Works Department indicated that the answers were yes to those questions.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming down. I wanted to talk a little bit, I wanted, you did address the question of building height, but I wanted you to go over that again and make sure that I'm completely understanding it correctly. Excuse me. As I understand the report and as I understand what you said, if we were to just annex this property and do nothing with the zone change, the building height today could be 35 feet. Is that correct?
That's my understanding of both the RS and the RA zoning districts.
And then what's the setback on, that would be required on something like that?
Counselor, the setback is discussed in the staff report, and I apologize, I don't remember offhand what it is. My recollection is the setback between the existing manufactured home park and the structures we proposed to build are greater in the RM2 zoning district than in the two single-family districts. Because, I'm sorry, I was just going to say it's based on height.
Thank you. That comports with what I understood as well. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding it correctly. So actually, we could have buildings the same height, but closer to the property line if we leave it alone, or it would actually have more of a setback if we were to make this adjustment.
And that is what the staff report told the planning commission and what the planning commission found in their recommendation to this body.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Suzanne Cotwasser.
Can I have a slide that shows the zoning area?
And Suzanne, it's five minutes.
On this slide? Up here. Show me. Okay. All right.
Thank you. Good evening, madam. There, I did it again, Chuck. Mr. Mayor and members of the planning commission, my name is Suzanne Cotwasser, and I'm here tonight to represent East Lancaster Neighborhood Association. Five minutes to get through all the points is a really short timeframe. Maybe you'll ask me some questions if I rush over stuff. And I hope you've taken time to read through both the planning commission testimony and the testimony that I submitted today. One of the things that staff talked about that I want to emphasize is that there is no explanation of why Marion County, not the city of Salem, but why Marion County rezoned the one half of this property as RM. And I think that that would be interesting to look at. Nobody's brought that forward. It's not mentioned anywhere. It just says it's RM. But Marion County doesn't have an RM1 and an RM2 zone. It just has multifamily. And it leaves discretion in your codes, which I don't particularly understand, to allow the developer to decide what is most appropriate, an RM1 or RM2 designation. And you actually have usurped your legal authority by letting them do that. You have the right to say, we think that RM1 fits here better than RM2. And so I think, I hope you'll consider that. And they, one of the things that really bothered me about the whole application is that they started off with mistaken premise. They said that we needed, what was it? Let me see. They said that they needed 2,897 acres of multifamily land. They confused units with acres. We need like 3,000 units of apartments in the next 15 years, but that's only 207 acres in total. And 15 years divided into 207 comes out to approximately 14 acres a year. And you've already annexed well over 14 acres. As a matter of fact, this is like a third of that requirement for one year. So I think that there's flaws in how they said there's a need for this. And then the other thing that's kind of a problem within your statutes is that you don't define vicinity. So they always refer to Salem needs this, Salem needs that, but you're not looking at, does East Salem need this? East Salem is already 50% RM zone land, and other parts of Salem, for example, South Salem and West Salem, are more like 30% to 35%. We're full of RM. What we need is affordable housing, but not necessarily affordable rental housing. We are just, got approved for the pick suite mushroom property for almost 700 residential units. That's what we need, is more of that kind of housing in our area. And then the question that you had about building heights, if you allow them to go to RM2, they can go up to 30, actually up to 50 feet. And the setback is one foot per height of the building. So if you have a 35 or 40-foot three-story building, you have to go 40 feet back. So there is some advantage to an RM1 because we're actually going to get more separation between the adjacent properties with an RM1 because they're only going to be able to go up two stories. And that's going to give us the 35-feet setback versus a 15-foot if it was single-family residential. So we're going to be able to put it off. There were some pictures that I sent in, and the originals are in color, and it's really important, hopefully you got them in color. But this is from Pat Mix, who's going to testify next, front door. And imagining that one of these pictures, there, I don't know if they cut it off, but you see that there's a road in front of her house. Well, that's where a six-foot fence is going to go. And so instead of looking out in open field, she's going to look out at a six-foot fence and then beyond that, a tall building. And so that really changes the character of her view and already the...
Thank you, Suzanne.
All right.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yes.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down on this and all other aspects of your representation in the neighborhood. I'm not quite sure where on this map that is up there is the mobile home park.
Okay, you see where it says royalty circle northeast?
Actually, I don't, but I'll go.
Okay, there's a sign that says territory, and then just below that, it says royalty circle northeast.
That whole thing.
That's where the mobile home park is.
I've got it now. Thank you very much.
And just for clarifications, further to the south, you see that open area off of Auburn Road. That's where the housing development's going to go for pick suite. And so there's going to be some major impacts on traffic and so forth.
Okay. Any other questions? All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Patricia Mick. Thank you.
I'm a resident of Center View Estates. I live overlooking the proposed project. If you'll look on the map up there on the wall, the purple line is the far western boundary line or the common property line of that proposed project. There's currently, right outside of that purple line, is a tall fir deciduous tree line. That tree line brings in some environmental factors to that property. Ground fog, fog from incoming inclemental weather, moisture condensation. I know all about it because I get it on my front porch every late hours of the night and in the morning, and also our roadway, royalty circle. Also, in the southern portion, there's ground, lower ground fog, which is more dense, which leads me to believe there's a wetland situation occurring back there. So anything that is designed as, presented to the city, planning for a multi-level family project should bear in mind these environmental factors when it comes to open-ended staircases. They will collect that condensation and be a hazard to the tenants and guests of that project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? All right, thank you. Okay. Mr. Robinson, you have seven minutes to respond.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, members of the City Council, and thank you for the folks who came out tonight to testify. So let me start with Ms. Mick's testimony first. We agree that the property has hydroic soils on it. We uncovered that. The city staff and departments understand that. But this site is not on the city's wetland inventory map. Neither the city staff nor our consultants have identified a wetland, but we have committed to doing a wetlands delineation. We'll have a biologist go out and do the standard delineation to determine if there's a wetland. We'll make that document public, of course, because you have to release it to the Department of State Lands. But we don't believe there's a wetlands there. Yeah, there's hydroic soils, but that doesn't equate with a wetland. That's one of three tests. But we have committed to doing a wetland analysis. We're happy to do that. Let me talk about Ms. Calvaster's testimony on behalf of the Neighborhood Association. We respect the City Council's ability to make the decision. We've simply provided the argument and evidence to urging you to act, to do what we've asked you to do. Staff examined it. They reached the same conclusion and recommended approval of the city planning commission. The planning commission looked at all the evidence and had two public hearings and listened thoroughly to everyone and reached the same conclusion. So we're not telling, we wouldn't presume to tell the city what to do. We do think this is an appropriate site under your approval criteria for multifamily housing. My client told the planning commission he has experience in developing multifamily housing, and he has good experiences with that. So we're confident that this is the right site and that we can do a development, which is a credit to the neighborhood and not a problem. I agree, the application made a mistake and transposed the multifamily deficit numbers, acreage, to single-family homes. I agree, I said that in page two of my letter dated today, but that doesn't do away with the fact that there's still a significant deficit in multifamily homes. And the July 1, 2019 update that I read to you a short time ago expressed the need to do something concrete to reduce that deficit. This application is part of that, and it's an appropriate location for multifamily housing. It helps reduce the deficit. Let's see what else would be helpful for you here. So, you know, regardless, and I, regardless of what happens there, that vacant lot is going to go away. It's in the city, it will be in the city, we hope, and it's in the urban growth boundary. It's appropriate for urban development. And yeah, you're going to look at a fence, and yes, the neighbors there will look at buildings. But either way, they're going to be taller buildings. Either zone, regardless of the choice this council makes, allows taller buildings. We think we can do a good job following the city's code to provide appropriate buffering and landscaping and setbacks, and we don't think it'll have a bad impact at all on the neighbors. What's most important, though, aside from what I think, is whether we've met the approval criteria. And staff has looked at it, your planning commission looked at it, and they all concluded that indeed we did. So Mayor, unless there are other questions that you or council have for me, we'd again ask that you follow the planning commission's recommendation and approve the application.
I have a couple.
Thank you, sir.
Has the record then been corrected on whether it's acreage or units? Has that been fixed?
So the, I should say, let me answer that in two ways. The record was always clear from the staff. It was the applicant that transposed the numbers. So staff had the correct numbers to the planning commission. And if you look at the recommendation by the planning commission, they relied on the correct numbers as well. And I acknowledged in my letter dated today at page two that our application had transposed those numbers. But the deficit and acreage for multifamily housing is correct in the record, and the planning commission relied on the correct numbers.
And your argument on whether there is a wetland there is really standing water versus a wetland. I wasn't sure what your term was on the soils.
Well, they're hydroic soils. They're soil, they're, you don't need to, you don't need a short lesson on wetlands, and I'm not going to go there, but what the evidence shows you is there are hydroic soils. There are soils capable of supporting a wetland, but there's no wetland identified either by photographic evidence or by an evaluation of the site or because it's not on the city's wetland inventory. But we have committed to the planning commission, and we commit again to the City Council, we will do a wetland delineation, make sure there's not a wetland when we submit our application, and we'll make that a public document.
And is that a condition now on this application?
It, Mayor, it is.
Would you do that study?
Mayor, it is not a condition, but it's in the record that we've offered and committed to do it.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've said a couple of times now that it's not on the city's inventory, but I'm curious why it would be on the city's inventory. Do we regularly put things on our inventory that are outside the city limits?
So my experience has been that inside the urban growth boundary, if I'm misunderstanding how Salem might do this, please correct me, my experience has been inside the urban growth boundary. It's quite common for cities to do an inventory, even if it's not in the city's limits. But even if I'm wrong about that, and I'm one of, probably the first attorney that admits he makes mistakes, I've had that pointed out by my family a number of times. The point is, there's no, there's no wetland there that we've observed. There's no photographic evidence. There's no evidence by walking the site. But because it was an issue that was of concern to the neighbors, we committed to doing a wetland delineation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I thought I was the first attorney who admitted to making mistakes.
If it makes you feel better, I'll concede that.
I'm not sure it does. I'm following up on the wetlands situation, really on the water situation, and I see the record is replete here since least the early to mid-'90s about the trouble or problems, potential problems with green crest ditch. And I'm not exactly sure where that even is on the map, and then I'd also like any kind of response you have to any potential problems you see with that ditch and how you might respond, react to that if there did come problems.
Bear with me just a minute, Counselor, and I'm going to read.
I'm showing it on the aerial with a blue line just to the east of the property, and it runs along. So this is, technically, it's mapped as the east fork of Little Pudding River, but it's the same location as the ditch, so.
So Counselor Anderson, I can't offer any additional evidence beyond what Ms. Cole said with respect to the ditch, but on page four of our letter dated today, we repeated what Glenn Davis told the Community Development Department in a November 21, 2019 memorandum that the, among other facilities, the stormwater management plan provides the outline for facilities adequate to serve the proposed zone. So it would not be unusual to me that as we go through a development proposal, we have to demonstrate to the satisfaction of that department and others that we have adequate plans to address stormwater. And I'm not a hydrologist, nor am I an engineer, but my experience has been when you develop vacant land, the drainage typically improves.
One, I want to follow up on this wetland issue as well. Would you have, you were the applicant, let's just assume the applicant being.
I'm representing the applicant.
Yeah. Have any problem if we put a condition that before development, you will do this wetland study and provide us with a report?
Not at all.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Cole? Do you have any questions for the planner? Very good. I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Hoy.
I have a question for the, for City Attorney before I make the motion. Is that all right?
Oh, yeah.
Would this be an appropriate time to include a condition about a wetland study in the motion, or is that something we would do separately?
You could do it as part of your motion, so you could see the staff recommendation with the additional condition.
Thank you. Okay, I'm ready. I move staff recommendation with the addition of requiring a wetland study prior to any development.
Second.
Second by Lewis. Any discussion? Counselor Anke.
Just that we should identify it as a wetlands delineation versus just a wetland study. That's a technical.
Okay, whatever.
Yeah.
I honestly, I don't know. I honestly, I don't know. Is that the correct language, then? Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. He appreciates it, and he'll just accept that as a friendly amendment.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I, I have a comment before.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a tough one for me. I want to very much support the neighbors and support their concerns, and I, I do. But I, I don't find any way to, to actually vote against this. And I, we do need multifamily housing. We do need more housing. I recognize that my ward especially has a lot of multifamily housing, but we have an obligation as a city to increase our inventory. And this impacts all of the other things we're talking about tonight, the more housing, the more available housing that we have. And I support the development ultimately, so I'll be voting in favor.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Our next hearing.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding fiscal year 2020 supplemental budget two for creation of special fund, special revenue fund 177 to receive and extend funds collected for the tourism promotional area. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes.
Introduce yourself.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's Robert Barron. I'm the city's chief financial officer. And tonight, we're requesting a supplemental budget for the creation of a special revenue fund to receive and expend funds for the TPA that was approved previously. So, the TPA is 2% on an estimated $45 million worth of revenues. We expect it to bring in about $900,000. We're going to implement it in January. It's going to give us about a half-year worth of revenues. You would normally think about $450,000. We asked for the supplemental budget to be equal to 700, because it's the first time through. We don't know exactly how much we're going to get, but the fund, the fund's expenditures will be limited to the monies received. So, we're asking, in government, we're not allowed to spend any money unless it's been duly appropriated. And so, you appropriated, or you allowed us to collect the money, and now we're asking for the fund to be established so that we can receive the money and expend it.
Okay. Very good. Any, any questions? I don't have any members of the public signed up, so if you have any questions for Mr. Barron. Very good. Okay. I'm going to close the hearing. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation.
Second by Nanki. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Without objection, I'm going to move item 5B to, to just ahead of item 7. Okay? Okay. We'll move ahead then with our, with our special orders of business. Counselor Hoy.
We're going for the.
Am I there? Yes.
Are we going for the polls first or the?
I'm going to let you, I'm going to let you do yours first.
Thank you.
I move to direct staff to present a report for council's consideration regarding organized car camping.
Second by Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that this, having some sort of organized quasi-regulated car camping is an important piece of the, the cafeteria, if you will, of solutions to our homeless situation. I think that on a, if we do this, if a number of places step up to help with this situation, we can, we can have a very small number in a lot of places throughout the city. I think it'll be very helpful. And frankly, people have asked me, I think one of the reporters who asked me about this, asked me where I came up with this idea or why I brought this forward. And honestly, it came when I was volunteering on Thanksgiving night at the, one of the warming shelters at the Presbyterian Church, and a woman came in who had been sleeping in her car, who was living in her car, but was, who couldn't get warm. She couldn't get warm, and she couldn't, she didn't have the resources and the services she needed. And it just occurred to me that we needed, this would be something that we could do pretty easily to help people like her. And I know we get a lot of frustrations from neighbors with people's parking various places around the city in unauthorized areas. This would allow a coordinated, organized, thoughtful solution. I just think, I just think it's a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate your motion, Counselor. I, I was unaware that this was not allowed, frankly. I was approached after our first hearing on the sit-ly ordinance, and it genuinely surprised me. I had a specific church pointed out to me in my general vicinity that had tried to do this and ran into an obstacle. So, I, I really appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it makes sense. Counselor Anderson.
I do, too. And on a practical matter, this is already happening all over the city. And it's much better for us to try to get some sort of handle on it and also to acknowledge that it happens and that, you know, it would be terrific if we had housing for everybody, but we don't, and we're not going to for a long time, no matter what our best efforts are. So, this is another of the panoply of things that we need to do.
Okay. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you. Just one more thing. I just want to reiterate that I want staff to explore methods to allow it, including best practices, what code changes we might need to make it possible, and what do we need to do to make this a successful program.
Okay. Very good. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll support the motion. It's similar, though, to, to tent camping. It's just they happen to be mobile homes instead. We'll still have similar issues regarding the use of restroom facilities as well. So, a lot of the pieces that were in this evening's staff report, I would assume, would be similar as far as liabilities. Again, if there's a private organization that wishes to do that, to at least understand, similar to what we brought forward tonight, what the, the issues, limitations, restrictions may, that need to be in place.
I'm really hopeful, after Pamela Lyons Nelson's testimony, I'm hopeful that we'll hear from various churches who are interested, will provide the kinds of facilities that are needed to support this sort of arrangement and, and really take this on as part of their ministry or mission. So, that would be one area. There's other areas that can certainly involve themselves. Willamette's got a big parking lot. I mean, we've got all kinds of places for this stuff, so I think, I think it's just a real opportunity for folks who are concerned to really step up and be participants in this solution. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, then, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Nanki, you have 3.3A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation.
Second. Second by Hoy.
And, and just to speak to the motion, the Federal Emergency Management Agency Performance Grant provides a lot of financial support for our emergency preparedness manager, Greg Walsh. We finished up our last meeting of the Mayor's Resiliency Task Force last week and had some recommendations on how we move forward with that. And knowing that we couldn't get a full piece onto the agenda and we want to start tracking our training that takes place as of January 1, opted to, to pull this and pull up this inside. And then whether or not council needs to actively approve this, if such, I would, I would make such a motion.
Why don't you give us?
To accept the recommendation based on the will of council, that we can do it afterwards. But this is where we're running.
Why don't you give us a, why don't you give us a, a staff recommendation motion and so we can move?
And I did move staff recommendation.
You did. Okay. Who was the second? Hoy. That's right. Okay. Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counselors. So, we did complete the Mayor's Resilience Task Force. This is, we adjusted the goal from the original 50,000 that we proposed to 30,000 community members, middle school or older, to an awareness level of the two weeks' ready preparedness over two years, and that's starting January 1 of 2020. We, we feel like any more, just adding to it is always a great way to start, so we're not back counting any of the numbers. We'll use some surveys to gain some voluntary metrics when people, if people are willing to do so. The awareness level is listed up there, and the, the request that came from Counselor Lewis, very supportive, is that we will report back every three months on the, the numbers that we, we are actively working through.
Okay. Great. Very good. Very good. So, we will know when you hit 30,000? Is that what you're telling us?
Every, every three months, we will provide a report to councils, so that way we can be tracking where we are. And we expect there to be a little bit of a buildup and getting some support from community members and the other agencies we'll be working with. So, it may take a little while to start building up and having classes more frequently and getting more people. So, every three months, we'll provide a report, and then we'll continue to provide updates as we.
But just looking at one of the items, one gallon of water per person per day, how many days are you going to be recommending to these 30,000 residents?
Two weeks ready.
We're going with two weeks ready, so 14 days is our, is our recommendations across the board for 14 days of supply for all of these resources.
14 gallons per person?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Any further? Yes, Counselor.
Just in regards to those numbers, it's a large number, and I think we calculated it out to 288 people a day.
A week. I believe it was 280 people a week would be the required number we'd have to train.
Which is a lot of people, but as we move on, we'll be, we'll be training new trainers to deliver this to, to different communities and organizations. We'll be creating an online version of it, so people can just go watch it like they would do for, like a schmeck of a class. And there's a lot of other options for, for delivery as well. So, the number may start off slow and then should pick up steam, and then as we hit saturation, that number will kind of drop off again as far as new folks added. But we'll be continuously looking for, for new routes to make sure that we're identifying all segments of the population and delivering it across the spectrum.
And so, if, if a group wants to have this presentation, they contact you?
Yes, sir.
How do they do that?
My email is, is on the city website. We do have a, a spot on the city website that we're going to get this on there, including a sign up. And we're, the intent is to provide a variety of different methods. So, we're looking at trying to schedule one day a month where we'd host it in a single location, so anybody could show up to it. But then also, as I've been doing, is by request. So, when I get contacted, I coordinate a good time for people and their agencies or organizations and go out and present to their organizations.
So, I, you know, I'm going to take a chance. You don't okay boomer me, but how am I going to find you on our website?
ThecityofSalem.net/ Emergencies. If you are on the City of Salem's website, there's the emergency section, and there's emergency preparedness, and that's where you'll find all of our resources for being prepared for emergencies, our two-week-ready campaign, and you'll see signups for this course coming up shortly.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a follow-up question for the Train the Trainer classes. So, once you have individuals that you've trained to then lead the classes, are you going to be providing them with a tool to track how many people they're training so that it will be reported back to you?
Yes. So, the intent is to actually just count numbers and seats. We realized that we couldn't have everybody, there are certain areas that people won't, may not want to sign up or may not want to take the surveys. So, we'll actually count numbers and seats, and we'll have all of them getting back to us. And we've been working with the other 80-plus emergency managers throughout that are sit in our jurisdiction and have agreements from them, a lot of them already, to, to provide the training. So, the Salem Hospital, Salem Health Hospital, the Department of Corrections is already doing this as part of their program, so as they bring people in, it will, I will be the person that receives all of the counts from all of the other trainers.
Thank you.
Okay. Further, yes, Counselor.
Just that we'll also be utilizing social media, so people won't necessarily have to go look for it. We will be pushing it into them and trying to find every opportunity out there, like movies in the park. Hey, people show up early to get their seat? Let's train them while they're sitting there. There's nothing to do in the interim as well. So, we'll continuously, continuously be looking for ways to make sure people are two weeks ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Anderson, 3.3B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the staff recommendation on the agreement, intergovernmental agreement with ODOT.
Second.
Second by Hoy.
I think this is a terrific thing, and Director Fernandez knows what I'm going to say, but I will tell you, just because I've said it before, it's the second broken record tonight of, as far as I'm concerned. I ride my bike along that corridor on a regular basis. I have legal business on 25th, south of Mill Gill Crest, and that's just a horrible place. And we need, I'm sure we're already going to have dedicated striped bike lanes, but I would really urge that we have some sort of protected lane, ideally by some physical concrete-type barrier, but at the least by those, I don't know what you call them, the rubber posts that, that look more solid than they are, but they're at least some sort of visual warning to people. So, I look forward to, when the design comes back, seeing something like that.
Okay. Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Lewis.
Yes. Agenda item 3.3C, I move staff recommendation with the following addition, and that is to have staff report back to council at every council meeting, starting Monday, January 27, 2020, to the end of the session and including March 23, 2020, which will be five meetings.
What, what kind of report would you like?
The one that the staff is offering to do periodically.
Okay. But have it more regularly at each meeting?
Correct.
Okay. All righty. Who's second? Who's second? Nanki? Was that you?
I'll second it.
Anderson seconds it. Okay.
I recognize the, the upcoming session could be quite interesting. 35 days' worth of interest. And, and I recognize the need to have the, the Legislative Committee be able to stand in place of the City Council. But asking for a report back, five, five meetings to keep the entire council up on what's going on, I think, is appropriate.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was actually just going to register a piece of a no vote, no vote on this in the policy statement regarding environment. The, the last bullet point on the last page, no vote on inclusion of the carbon reduction framework, which is essentially the cap and invest portion.
So, that'll be.
Support the whole motion with the no vote on that.
Right.
Bullet item.
And it'll be recorded in the minutes. Thank you. Okay. Counselor Hoy.
I just had a question for the city manager regarding the motion. Do you have the capacity to deliver that?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's just an information report, so, okay, keep us all honest. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, where are we? Okay, we're going to go to...
Special.
Information reports, sorry.
Yeah, 555 or right.
Oh, here? We're there, okay? We're going to go to information reports then, and we'll let some staff folks go home. Okay, any questions? Yes, Councilor?
Yes, I'm on 6A, the drinking water. I'd like to first commend Director Fernandez and the Public Works staff for your good work last summer. We avoided the debacle, I'll say, of the summer before, and that's due to the good work of the Public Works Department at the direction of the staff, or council, excuse me. But I do note, Director Fernandez, that we had 59 issues last year that you and your people ably took care of, but it's only going to get worse. And I'm wondering if you could speak to that and to the capacity of the staff and the facilities we have now to take care of any problems that arise.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. I'd like to acknowledge Mark Bechtel, who wrote the report and is our operations manager, and it was his staff that successfully fought off the toxins for 59 days in a row. And there was, there were a lot of toxins in the water and in some respects heavier than the year before. And then I'd also like to acknowledge Brian Martin, our city engineer, because it was his staff that worked diligently at the end of last summer to get, not this past summer, the summer before, to get all of our components in place to perfect the activated carbon machines, the chlorination, the dechlorination machines, so that we were adding more chlorine at the end of the treatment as one final push, but we didn't want people feeling like they were drinking water that tasted like pool water. So we made the investments to remove the chlorine before it got into the system. We have one more year of using powdered activated carbon and the added chlorine as we did this year. We are in design of our ozone treatment facility. We already have a contractor in place. Council allowed us to hire the contractor under a construction manager, general contractor, CMGC process. They are already on board as well, helping us. I think the machinery has been, is that right, has it been ordered yet? Yeah, so it's been, so we expect to start construction this spring, and it will be ready not for summer 2020, but for summer of 2021. So we have, we're ready for this summer and then hopefully, we will have our permanent solution in place in the summer of 2021.
Yes.
Thank you very much for that report. I'd also neglected to also commend the city manager and the communication office because that was one of the issues we had two years ago, that there was a failure of communication not only between the staff and the council, but between the city as a whole and the people. And I have to say, the communication on this issue has been much improved and much more transparent. And I know I and the citizens of this city appreciate it very much, being told the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but. So thank you very much.
Mr. Fernandez, will we be going to the legislature again for additional funds to add wells? Where will we be doing this?
Yes, we intend to request additional funding and we certainly appreciate Senator Courtney's support and the rest of the legislature for the grant that we received. Interestingly enough, the money has to be spent first and the money will come later. That's just by way of timing. We do have the funds available and then the additional funding will simply help us to continue to make improvements in the water system.
Okay, so that'll be part of the report that Councilor Lewis will be hearing during session?
Every week.
Every week, okay. Councilor Anke?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, it was an excellent report, so thanks to the Public Works staff and Mr. Bechtel.
Mr. Bechtel, who wrote it.
He gave us a good outline of past history as well as what this last year looked like and what the future plans were for that system. So very well-written and people can go to that and understand the entire issue, even if they have limited knowledge of Sylen drove.
Brumhauptson.
It's like, great names and schmutz deck.
Any other information reports anyone want to bring up? Okay, we will then move to 5B. Mr. City Manager, we'll just turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for clearing the deck of some of those other issues and information reports. Last week, City Council requested a report on sites where overnight camping could be feasible. Thank you for your patience as that report was prepared and released today. The report provides 10 sites that emerged from a GIS search, geographic information system search, operational recommendations, the process for allowing a site, and other considerations. Because the report was released today and the importance of the issue of how to best assist our unsheltered residents, I request council's permission to summarize the report and my recommendations. I ask that your questions be held until the completion of my summary. Staff, city staff and staff from our partner, the Community Action Agency, are here to go into whatever detail council believes is helpful. The policy question for council is whether to allow overnight camping on city-owned property and under what conditions. I really recommend that as you consider that, you consider what you're trying to achieve as a council. Is council trying to achieve a 24-hour site or just an overnight site? Is the site part of the community's work on connecting people with help or is it independent from other services? The management report was prepared for the emergency camping to be temporary. Is this council's desire or will the site be an ongoing, permanent site? If temporary, what is the end date? Tied to weather, additional shelter capacity? So I would ask you to consider those kinds of questions as we go through. The sites, deservedly so, have received quite a bit of attention. Staff started with over 650. That was narrowed to 68, which was then narrowed to the 10 that are in the management report. We tried to use objective criteria for a very subjective, difficult issue. In addition to the criteria summarized in the table that is in the report, we also considered sites that can be managed to prevent camp growth and impacts on surrounding uses beyond the schools and residential criteria that were in the report. The criteria are not of equal weight. There are no sites that pop out as ideal. To assist council with the decision of where, staff's consensus is that Wallace Marine Park, if a temporary use, could be a feasible location. The site at Wallace Marine Park that would be considered is bounded by the old boat ramp, the Union Street Railroad Bridge, the parking lot, and Marion Street Bridge. This area is used by the public to launch canoes and kayaks and during warmer months is used by families for swimming and wading. There's a location where we have our life jacket station. The area does have a public bathroom and access to a parking lot. I mentioned it as a temporary location because the area is prone to flooding and then in the warmer months is, although would be decided by council, it has been a popular area for kayaks and canoes. At this time of year, it is underutilized. If council is interested in an ongoing location, the Front Street Parking Lot near the PGE Substation in the Gilbert House could be a feasible location. Of the 10, another site that has some benefit would be the windows to the west across from where we're sitting right now. On operations, staff, I advise against allowing the establishment of a city site until the site can be managed. If council decides to proceed, the establishment will be a priority. However, 60 to 90 days will still be needed. Best practices for shelters or camping, including the sites in Eugene, are that the sites must be managed. Allowing the establishment of a site before management and controls can be in place is not advised for liability, safety, and operational reasons. The cost estimates are in the report. The expense of supervising the site depends on the hours of operation. Again, going back to my question for you, if this is a daytime-only, or excuse me, an overnight shelter with the daytime use being not allowed, the cost could be reduced. We're estimating that a startup cost in six months of operation would be approximately $4,000 to $500,000. The source of that funding would be the city's contingency fund, although we would look at other potential sources. But for this evening and given the time that was provided for a report, I want to be very clear with council that the likely source would be the city's general fund contingency. I've been asked what to do with the camping ordinance. The choices are to continue with the effective date of December 16 or to delay enforcement until a temporary site is available. The consensus of staff is to proceed with enforcement. Why? In past years, campers have not been concentrated within the city at one location. The current location at Commercial and Union is highly problematic and should not be allowed. Dispersal would be safer for the campers. Large unsupervised sites are problematic for residents and public health and safety and a greater risk than dispersed camps. Enforcement, as with other quality of life issues, would be limited by our police resources. Police will not be seeking out tents or camps. Enforcement would focus on camps that pose health and safety concerns to the campers, neighbors, or the public. With that, I would, again, say staff are here to answer questions you might have. We do have the capability to call up any of the sites on the big screen using the GIS if you wanted to take a closer look at any of the, actually, any of the 650 sites, but certainly any of the 10 sites. And Police Chief Moore and the Community Action Director, Mr. Jones, are here to speak to any operational questions you might have, as is Nicole Oates from our housing authority. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, I just want to, I just had a, just a quick question. You mentioned 650, any of the 650 sites. Why then, generally, the sites that are showing up here, at least the first nine are... We've got kind of a mix, I guess, of parks with Windsors West, the Pine Street Triangle. That would be the triangle?
Near Center 50+.
And the Edgewater Greenway from where to where?
That would be, I might need some help with that, Peter, or the Edgewater parcel, the dimensions or the bounds for that?
Well, it's that whole green area between Edgewater and Highway 22.
No, I'm looking at it, the east-west termin, where would they, which parts of it? Are you talking about the entire?
Well, we just looked at the area that's available, so I think there's the area, I think there's that little group of shopping areas on the east.
The old city hall.
And then the old city hall in the west.
Okay.
It's kind of the bounds of what that area might be.
Everything, okay.
Right. I mean, or any small amount within that. So we were, as we were doing the analysis, we were just looking at, you know, so it's flat, you know, one of the, one of the criteria was, did the locations have any topography? You know, with the GIS data, we were able to tell, so looking at, you know, just the, all of the locations then, which ones were flat versus having some kind of topography, which ones were city-owned? And then, as we looked at them, just, you know, did they have water available nearby? You know, hydrant that could be tapped? Those were the criteria that we were looking at.
So Sunny Slope Community Garden would be the same kind of strip there that is city-owned?
Right.
Adjacent to that neighborhood?
Right.
Okay. Why wasn't, I'm just curious, why weren't other parks chosen? Some other parks that have large, open meadows and things like that that would be?
I think one of the issues was, we wanted to stay away from being next to residential area, single-family residential.
Okay.
And schools were an issue, and a lot of our parks are surrounded by single-family residential.
Do you have deed restrictions on any of our parks?
Some.
Which ones have deed restrictions?
Bush Park has a deed restriction, Marion Square has a deed restriction.
What's Marion Square's like? Isn't it on the list here?
So Marion Square, thank you for, Mr. Bechtel, for doing some research, quick and dirty today on this, but it has a public use restriction, so for Marion Square, you could do it. This would still be, I would think, a public use.
Okay. Same, what's the restriction like on Bush's Pastor Park then?
Bush's Pastor Park is a little bit more restrictive. It must be used for a park use and I would need to look at that a little more closely.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. Just a general question first. When you say services on this chart there, services mean social services?
That's correct. I think that's what we were looking at.
Then, I have some question about looking at Wallace Marine Park. I mean, if it's there, it's just a walk across the Bike Ped Bridge to get to the services. So it seems to me that that area is actually amenable to folks seeking services. I mean, that's just my personal view of it. Then, the, this is for the city manager, the $400,000 to $500,000, would that be per camp or total if we have more than one camp?
Per camp, approximately.
And my understanding is that that figure is related to just overnight as opposed to 24 hours?
Yes, correct.
Then, assuming it was overnight, it would sound like any proposed camping area during the day would, it would be fenced in and locked during the day from certain hours. Is that correct?
That is a best practice from other cities.
And then, I also understand, as part of the services goes back to, do we want to help people or just warehouse them? I don't know if warehousing was the term you used, but that's the term I, I don't think it was. That's the term I understood. That figure would potentially, the figure we talked about, would potentially include, say, some counselor who might be present at the, whatever the site is, outside the locked gate, but available to help people during the day?
The estimate that I just mentioned, again, would be for a six-month operation and would provide for some case management.
Okay, and that case management could, would be onsite?
I would defer that question to Mr. Jones.
Okay, then...
Would you like an answer, would you like Mr. Jones?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the opportunities and challenges that this proposal might bring. So in terms of, if we were involved in something like this, what we would do is essentially expect that the individuals who were camping in that location would be part of some longer-term set of goals and some programmatic outcomes that would attach the end of their time there to exits into permanent housing. So we would want to provide case management, depending on where it was. It would be on-site case management, but it would also be people who, you know, case managers who were essentially working with those particular clients as if they were any other set of programs we might author, right?
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Jimmy, would that be then, the folks that have signed up for but not gotten into housing in the HREP program, or is that who you're talking about kind of?
It very well could be, and in many cases. It depends, one of the really unknown parts of all of this is, one of the questions that doesn't get asked very frequently is, who would end up in a camp like that? So I think the common assumption from many of us would be that the individuals who are camping outside the Arches facility right now might be the ones who would end up in that particular camp. But in my view, they probably, only a fraction of those would end up in that camp. Those individuals would struggle, in many cases, to be in a kind of confined environment that, you know, organized tent camping would provide them. So we would have individuals who were from a little bit lower needs level, who were homeless, who were camping outside, that would probably make up the majority of the individuals who would end up in that particular location. So I would still expect many of those to be eligible for HREP. Right now, we have 2,500 people who are homeless, who are on our waitlist. We have about maybe 600 individuals in the urban growth boundary that would be eligible for HREP placement. Once that process has been done, we have done 326 as of this moment in terms of assessments of this higher-level population within Salem. And we've referred those individuals to the Housing Authority. And I suspect, and frankly, some of those individuals that are camping outside of Arches right now have already been assessed for this particular purpose. Some of them have already been sent to HREP, but in some cases, we're dealing with individuals who have such exceptionally high mental health concerns, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, the Housing Authority is struggling and we would struggle, anybody would struggle, to make sure that they were eventually housed. There is a kind of need level in this community that is above HREP, frankly. HREP is a scattered site model and that will work very, very well and has worked very, very well for the majority of this high-needs homeless population. But we really need congregate housing, which is essentially an apartment complex dedicated to this one particular purpose of individuals who cannot, for whatever reason, prosper in a scattered site model. So Redwoods Crossing, on Fisher Road, is going to be open pretty soon, and there's 37 units in that, I believe. The Housing Authority is going to provide vouchers for those individuals. We're going to do the services there. And so some of those individuals that are outside of Arches right now would be the kinds of folks that would go into Redwoods instead of scattered site HREP placements.
What's the optimal size of this kind of camp then, with that population that you're describing?
I would recommend keeping it as small as possible. You also have, you know, a number of considerations there in terms of, you know, impact, in the sense, if we're dealing with about essentially 1,000 individuals who aren't in shelters, who aren't in cars, and are essentially camping in the urban growth boundary, you know, you would want to have camps essentially large enough to deal with the camping needs of, you know, of a sizable chunk of that particular population. But in terms of managing something like that, you're better off keeping it as small as you possibly can. I would say somewhere in the range of 30 to 40 individuals would be sort of optimum toward the... the high end of that, but I believe that that is, that it's a manageable number of people. If you go over 50, you know, you're already starting to see some of the consequences of that outside of Arches right now. We have about 40 tents and 70 individuals, many of them who have been homeless for eight to 10 years, many of those were deep campers within the Wallace Marine and Quarry area before those camps were trespassed, and so it's going to be very difficult to manage a situation with that group of individuals confined in a small area in large numbers over a period of time.
Councilor Anderson?
I'd like to see if we could pull up the Front Street parking lot and the windows to the west, and while that is happening, and this is pretty much a question for Chief Moore, we had somebody testify tonight that the better way to do this in terms of the camping ban would to be reactive, not proactive, and my understanding of the way the camping, well, not the camping ban, but the concerns with tent camping prior to the ordinance, it's always been kind of on a complaint basis, and I guess I'd be interested in hearing from you, what the police would propose on the camping ban, in other words, would you go out seek, seeking people, or would you, seeking people who are camping illegally under the new law, or would you react to complaints and be a complaint-driven, just like much of the compliance in the city is driven like that?
Thank you, Jerry Moore, Chief of Police. As I understood the reactive, what the lady was talking about was that if they're tidy and there's no bad behavior, they're away from water and they're out of view, that the police might leave them alone, and I guess that's possible, given the resources we have. I would say that we would look more at public safety and public health, we would probably be more aimed at downtown or residential campers that are creating issues that we've experienced for five years, and, and so that's probably how we would approach the issues.
And so, based on what Mr. Jones was talking about and what we've all seen, I would presume that the camps right now, and tents right now, outside of the Arches and at the corner of Commercial and when front goes off, there's already complaints about that, so when the camping ban goes into effect, that is something that will be looked at immediately. And I see Mr. Jones is nodding his head, I presume you are too?
That's correct, yeah, that's correct.
And I further understand that there are some people there, based on both of your professional opinions, who really are not amenable to any sort of provided camping or place for them to stay, but instead would rather, would choose to maybe fade back into the woods and along the river that they were doing before the sweeps.
I, I, I think there, well, I know there's no doubt, there, there are a certain group of people who would not be interested in going into one of these camps, as I've said here on numerous occasions, they live the lifestyle they choose to live, and sometimes it does involve following rules, or, and there's illegal behavior involved, so I, I don't think there's any doubt that many of those people are going to remain without a place.
And just as without, without any, also, also without any doubt, there are people who would want to take advantages of, of these services, and I see Mr. Jones nodding his head.
So there definitely would be individuals who would take advantage of it, I don't think that we would, you know, open up such a, an opportunity and people wouldn't fill it up, I believe that that would certainly happen. I would say that, in many ways, this concept of service resistance populations, we don't really accept that as a, as a thing. Frequently, many of the homeless individuals in this community have so much trauma related to all kinds of things that have happened to them in their lives, and frankly, they have a lot of systems traumas. Housing providers, homeless services have promised them again, and again, and again, for years and years and years, that they were going to get them housed, and they were going to get them help, and broken those promises over and over again, so a lot of times, you know, they are very suspect of our offers for help. That said, you know, we're dealing with, in that particular location, a lot of folks with fairly severe mental health problems. One individual in particular is a very well-known individual, he suffered from a TBI before, I interviewed him for HREP in the summer of 2018. Last summer, he was shot in the head by a flare gun, and his, his mental health is much worse now than it was then, so those are the kinds of things, you know, if you go back to around 1955, you know, we were dealing with about 480 people per 100,000 in institutions of care, mental health institutions. By 1990, that was down to about 30, and so a lot of individuals who would have gone into those systems of care 40 and 50 years ago are essentially outside today, so we're going to struggle with those sorts of people regardless of, of whatever we provide.
I defer to other councillors, I may have some more questions, but.
Thank you, I have a question for Ms. Rutherford, or perhaps Ms. Oates. I was hoping that you could provide us with a reasonable, realistic date that we might expect Redwood Crossing and the Euquina Hall to be ready for clients.
Hi, this, I'm Nicole Oates, I'm the Housing Administrator, I, I have a completion date scheduled for April 30th of 2019 currently for Redwood Crossings, however, that is contingent on the weather and our ability to get the parking lot done during any rainy seasons.
And Euquina Hall?
And, so Euquina Hall is, is on a slower timeline, and that is contingent on DAS completing the subdivision process. This is about a year behind in completing that subdivision process. Our latest update is that, depending, depending on how responsive their consultants are, it could be within a month, it could be closer to four months.
Thank you, I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, I would like us to, to contact the state of Oregon in no uncertain terms, and tell them that they need to get their act together on this project. They have delayed, and delayed, and delayed this thing, and we have people living on the streets because of it, and I'm sick of it, and I'm, I don't get mad very often, but I'm mad. And this thing, and you and I have talked about this.
Oh, yeah.
And it's strictly on the state of Oregon, and they are not doing their job, and our residents are suffering, and we need people to step up at all levels to solve this problem. We are not going to solve it alone, we need the state of Oregon to be good partners, and they're not doing it, and they need to get on it.
Yeah, and we're, we're in the process, we have communicated with them for several years now on this project, and we continue, and, and I know Counselor Anderson will join me as well as you, and we've, we've talked with them, and you've heard the same kind of runaround we've been getting, I'm chairman of the Capital Planning Commission, I questioned them about it at our most recent meeting, got the same runaround, so we're going to be upping the ante on it, you hate to do it, but we'll be talking with our legislative delegation as well as some of the supervisory folks at Department of Administrative Services, we can't seem to get a straight answer at the staff level.
Thank you, I hope Representative Clem, Senator Courtney, Representative Evans, all those folks.
We've always been responsive.
I hope they're listening, because I know they're good partners for us, and I hope they'll step up and help us solve this problem.
They've always been responsive. It's also stopping a city park, we have a six-acre park out there, I mean, it's a whole, it's slowing up housing, both affordable and market-rate housing on a large portion of the project, it slows down any commercial activity, development they've talked about on Center Street, I mean, it's just unconscionable what's happened, so.
That's right.
I, I hear you, yeah.
Thank you.
If it's appropriate under the city attorney's rules, I would move, or city's attorney's interpretation of rules, I would move that this mayor send a strongly worded letter directly to the affected officials on behalf of the entire city council, expressing our concerns as expressed by Counselor Hoy, by the mayor, and by me in past meetings. Is, can I, should I?
You can just tell me to do that, and I'd be glad to.
Please do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Done.
Yeah, so if I could see the maps, I know the, the one that you're showing there, which is Marine, Wallace Marine Park, I certainly know where that is, what I'm interested in mostly is the Front Street one.
That's it.
That's it?
Yes, this is the Front Street.
Okay, where does that relate to the A.C. Gilbert House? Okay, so it's, it's on the other side of the bridge from A.C. Gilbert, yeah, and underneath the bridge there, okay, that, that was my concern, and then if we could also look at windows on the west. And there was a concern there about, on the chart, the flowchart here, about residential areas, and maybe you could use the pointer to find out, where are the residential areas around there? I, I know they're on Saginaw, but I think they're further south?
The apartment complex, right next to it.
Okay, South Block, okay, got it, got it. I guess I'm, well, I've got one more question. It seems to me that, as under the, the, the city manager presented us with sort of three either-or options, one is 24 hours versus overnight, I've already expressed my views about overnight, and two is helping people or warehousing, I've already expressed my views about that, the other one was temporary or permanent, and with respect to that, I, I think they should be temporary, but I guess I kind of temper that in that my concern is in the gap between when this ordinance, anti-camping ordinance would go into effect, albeit with the complaint-driven nature of it rather than the search-and-destroy nature of it, versus the 60 to 90 days it would take to get anything up. So I guess my question to the city manager is, what if we said this should be temporary, couldn't we move that 60-to-day, 90, 60 to 90 days up to, say, 30 days, or 30 to 60 days?
Again, if council were to go in this direction, we would certainly make it a priority, however, I don't want to mislead or overpromise how much time it would take to have fencing, to have, have, really, more importantly than the site considerations, would be to staff up and have, have staff available who could actually manage and provide the, the site security and, and case management that was talked about earlier.
Could you accept some sort of motion that would say, as soon as, I don't know, feasible, or, you know, talking like a lawyer, I would say, as, under a reasonable person's standard, what you could do?
Of, of course, again, this would be a, a priority, I, I can't speak on, on behalf of the Community Action Agency, especially since we haven't negotiated an agreement yet, but certainly for, for city staff and the Housing Authority, would, we would make it a, make it a priority to, to implement, implement the site that, that is, is chosen by, by council. I, again, I don't want to, though, mislead anyone, this is very, very challenging work in, in finding, you know, finding staff that can work with the individuals who are likely to be in this, in this site, will take some time.
Yeah, I think we all recognize that problem, and I'm looking at Mr. Jones to see if you would, if the city were to reach some sort of agreement with you and your people, how soon do you think it could be feasible to start a temporary camp?
I want to preface what I'm about to say with, we have not thought about this very much, and certainly are not even suggesting we'd, we would be willing to do this particular work in particular, because one of the things that we are facing, quite frankly, is, we are spread like warm butter over toast at the moment, and all of my staff are tapped out beyond imagination, we have housed 3,000 individuals in the last 30 months, we housed 241 in the month of October alone, we have provided thousands of meals, and we were, you know, shepherding the city's warming efforts and a dozen other things in that capacity, delivering about $6 million worth of services, homeless services, into the community. So, to answer your question, you know, in the most honest way I can do so, I don't know, you know, if it were to fall upon us, I think we could, you know, do our best to get started immediately, but it would still take, you know, even in our regular hiring practices, it would still take a couple of months to get up and, and, and running, for sure. There could be interim measures, one of the things that I think might be a workable solution would be to expand the warming situation in the city, right now, we are on a temperature basis. One model of effective warming is to go to a duration model that's available from, you know, essentially a season, January, February, March, and be open every night, but I don't want to leave anybody in, with the belief that that would be an easy thing, or a cheap thing either. We struggle to get enough volunteers to do warming on the basis that we're doing it, and right now, in addition to that warming enterprise, we're about to, not us in particular, but our partner, United Ways, about to open a women's shelter in town, and that's going to be entirely volunteer-run, and if we were to use volunteers heavily for something like this, that would just even tap further into our volunteer base here, so I think if it were to be done, it would primarily be done with paid staff, and it would take some time to get all that on board.
Counselor Kaser?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, I'm just curious if, if there has been any service organization besides the Community Action Agency that's contacted the city to offer assistance with an organized camping initiative?
No one has contacted me, no one has contacted the Urban Development Director, I believe the police chief reached out to UGM, and, and I'm not sure if he discussed with UGM chief an expansion of, of their services, their willingness to help us with this initiative.
I didn't ask them about that.
So, it's really just Community Action Agency that's coming to the table to discuss this, nobody else has expressed interest in, because we've heard a lot from folks, especially at the last two council meetings, but I guess it's surprising that there's nobody else that's actually invested in this, or interested.
We did not, staff did not, you know, aggressively seek out other potential partners, because of the one-week turnaround time, we went to our established partner, the partner we have in the Community Action Agency through the Day Center, through the Warming Center Network, through the other, other initiatives, through urban development that we have with, with Community Action, specifically Arches. If, if this council were to choose to proceed, we could certainly attempt to find another provider, however, one of the weaknesses we've discovered compared to other benchmark cities such as Eugene is, is we don't have the same depth of, of, of nonprofit providers. The cities of Eugene's rest area programs are, are managed by nonprofits, and, and we really don't have that, that depth of, of nonprofit assistance for, you know, the general population of individuals experiencing homelessness.
I have a couple of other questions, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
If the site, if we establish a camping site, in the staff report, it said if the site was just for, was not 24 hours a day, but was just for sleeping essentially, it would reduce the cost, do you have an idea by, like, percentage-wise, ballpark, how much those costs would be reduced by?
Again, we would, you know, certainly put a sharper pencil to this, I, I, I reduced, well, the, let me back up, I apologize, in the staff report, and I think in some earlier discussions regarding this initiative, the $1 million figure was used, the estimate that is in, that I shared this evening, again, is based upon a, a six-month duration and the overnight approach, so about a, a one-third reduction in the, in the operating costs, then further reduced by limiting it to six months.
And I'm just curious about that million-dollar figure is, for the staffing to administer the site, provide security, what, what were the numbers used to calculate that, like, was it based on, like, having five staff, or what, what was, there's some, some way that that was derived, I'm just trying to understand?
And I would ask Mr. Jones to speak to that.
We put together a budget for that, if, Ashley, will you come forward and talk a little bit about, we put together three budgets over the course of the weekend to present, for an informational purpose, to the city council tonight, two related to organized camping, and one related to the expansion of warming.
All right, thank you, good evening, councilors and Mr. Mayor, so what I have here today is just a couple of examples and rough figures for budgets that hopefully will provide some insight to the questions that you're asking here tonight. So I'll first speak to the campsite for organized camping, so the $1 million figure was not far off, that was definitely our first gut instinct, but when then diving into the actual numbers, excuse me, numbers, it rang true. So for personnel, that included a program manager, so one FTE, a care coordinator, that's someone that really focuses on access to systems of care for mental health, substance abuse treatment, that's another FTE, and then a few case managers, so that would be a Monday-through-Sunday model. a Monday-through-Sunday model, so seven days a week. There were operational and supply cost, supply costs, most of which really spoke to the development of the facility, so security and lighting upgrades, maybe an office on-site, and then, of course, allowing for some sort of cosmetic work. So that could be getting everyone a special tent that looks the same and is uniform in nature, same with tarps or other camping supplies, and that would have to rotate through as campers arrived. And then down at the bottom, which seemed to be the most cost-prohibitive, was the contract services. And so you would need garbage, garbage, maintenance, porta-potty services, and then first and foremost, the security and patrol services. I actually called around a little bit, and I got some cost estimates, and for an annual cost, it was about $500,000 a year for security. If you wanted to shorten that up, it'd be via the same formula, the six months or 90 days. And that is for overnight security personnel with two on shift. And then, any questions about the tenting budget? We have, we brought copies here today if you would like to see it.
So if I'm understanding correctly, the million-dollar figure is inclusive of, like, porta-potties and wash facilities and dumpsters and tents and fencing and lighting?
It is, yes.
Okay. So the staff report, those are all broken into separate things, so that was not clear. So, and you had mentioned two FTE plus a few case managers, like, how many is a few?
It'd be two FTEs specifically.
Two FTE and then a few case managers as well?
Oh, it is two FTE, a program manager and care coordinator, plus two FTE in case manager. So it's four total, excuse me.
Thank you.
Counselor Kaser, I'm sorry, does anyone else have questions right now? Great. Counselor Young?
Kind of a follow-up on the staffing question that you had provided. Was that based the total of, I guess, four FTEs altogether? Is that if it, the campus running 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
It is, yes.
Okay.
That could be certainly cut, cut down if it went to a 12-hour model at night.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis, did you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've, I've got a few questions. I'm going to try and start with the easiest one. I'm not sure who of staff to ask this, but under, on the chart number four, Marion Square Park, it shows that is in proximity to schools. Can you tell me what schools those are?
Yes, I can speak to that. So in the Chomekina Parkate, on the first floor, next to the Urban Development Department Office, there is a high school house there.
Is that it?
Yes.
I think there may be another Sunshine Schools right across the street in the Baptist Church.
And I think there's also a...
So it's depending on if we're speaking about public schools or private schools as well. A lot of our initial look was at public schools.
And if I could ask Mr. Jones a couple of questions. One, I'll go back to the comment about security and having, having two people walking around. Would it be, and I know there's, there's concern about using volunteers, but what about using volunteers in conjunction with the highly-trained security versus?
You can do that, certainly. I can tell you right now, what we're doing at the Arches Day Center at the moment is we have, we're employing two security guards, one that's primarily on the inside and one that's making frequent rounds outside. That's probably costing us $100,000 a year, somewhere in that range, to provide those services. But we feel like not only does it keep our staff safer in the environment that we're working, but it also, for the clients, most of them express appreciation for it, because frequently, you know, we have situations within the population where there's bullying taking place, or there is, in certain cases, predation taking place. And so providing that onsite security does an awful lot to reduce everybody's anxiety level and keep everybody as safe as we can. And I got to tell you, I did not get to that point easily, because I'm from a model up in Portland, which we never, we don't call the police, we don't use, you know, onsite security, but, you know, the volume of individuals that we're dealing with on a daily basis and some of the behavioral issues sort of requires it.
Another question, if I could. In the staff report, there is a, on page five, a sentence, "Existing shelters report that they have space available on most nights. When weather conditions warrant, service providers also open temporary warming centers." Putting aside folks that cannot participate in shelters, whether it be because of a severe mental illness or, or the rules that a shelter may have, are we at the point yet where we need, I think what is called a low-barrier shelter, more than what we need a tent camping place?
Well, so we have around 300 emergency shelter beds on a regular night without warming beds brought into the system. It doesn't approach the number of people that we have staying outside. And the three most common reasons that homeless individuals do not go to one of the established shelters generally fall out around substance use issues, fall out around the fact that they're frequently partnered and don't want to separate from their partner, and often they have pets with them, which are very critical to their identity and to their, you know, own self-worth and their own ability to survive the situations that they're in. So quite commonly, they are refusing to set aside any of those three things. So that's the biggest reason that people do not shelter. If you read the state shelter study that was published by Oregon Housing and Community Services earlier in the year, it called out the need for navigation centers in both Eugene and Salem. And a navigation center isn't really what it sounds like, it, when you first hear that term. A navigation center is a combination shelter and service provision outfit. Essentially, what you do is you take 50 to 60 individuals into your shelter. It is low-barrier in the sense it does not require sobriety, it doesn't concern itself with whether or not you're partnered up, it doesn't really require you to give up your pets or anything like that. But at the same time, it puts them through a series of steps, sort of like old transitional housing used to do, with an end game in mind to graduate those individuals into permanent housing. So if we had such a place here, which I think is necessary eventually, we would use that especially to provide a staging ground for the city of Salem's Housing Authority's H-RAP program. Many of those individuals have been outside 10 years or more and, and struggled the first few times we put them inside. So it would be a way in which we sort of reduce some of the problems that we have there and make the possibility of success in housing greater. So I do think it is necessary. Whether or not it is more necessary than tent camping or any of that, you know, those are, those are subjective moral judgments, I think.
One last question, if I could.
Yeah.
On the chart, it mentions one of the criteria, services, and I took that to mean not only utilities, but, but health services that your organization provides. How important is it to have folks, I'll put it this way, sleep close to the services, or do you find that they are willing to walk, and if so, how far?
Well, that's a very difficult question. We don't track that information, so all of it's coming on my own personal speculation on that. It is not ideally for them, in many cases, like the situation we're currently experiencing down at Arches, to be essentially living on top of the services that we are providing on a daily basis. It's tough because of the density issue, it's tough because of some of the behaviors and the density issue, and it's tough on our staff, who have to work with the population in a regular capacity, but also sort of deal with all of the other things that are going on around us at the same time. That said, you want them as close to the services as you can possibly get them in a reasonable fence, because the farther individuals are away, the less likely they are to access any of these services. So I think we're doing a really good job right now in the downtown of providing meals, providing basic needs, and connecting people to housing. I don't think we're doing a great job at all in East Salem. And if you go along Lancaster in particular, there's a large and growing homeless population there that is not really connected to the services that are available in the downtown.
Counselor, I want to assure you, I, I mentioned this during our strategic planning session. I'm going to be proposing with, with, I hope substantial detail, a low-barrier shelter or navigation center. I think we've just got to move out on that, but I'll remind you, I also proposed a sobering center, and any of you who fall down on the way out will not find yourself in that sobering center at this point.
It is built, however.
It is built, we just can't, and we're seeing the same thing. The cost of operations are so difficult to handle. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And I, I want to take a moment to really thank you and all your staff. I want to take a moment to thank Urban Development and all their staff, our police and our fire, and everyone else who works with homelessness every single day, because I understand that there, there can be trauma working with vulnerable populations. And I understand and recognize how important that work is, and I know what it's like to be stretched really thin. And as a government employee myself, I know what it's like to feel stretched really thin, to not have enough resources, and to have something urgent fall in my lap. And I have to reprioritize all of a sudden. And all of a sudden, I have to put some things on the back burner because there is an emergency. And given what we have seen in this community, we have an emergency. The people of Salem want us, and they've been loud and clear. They want something done. Not 60 days from now, not six months from now, when the new shelter beds will be available, but right now. And so there's no perfect solution. And I think we know, given the $5.2 million that has already been spent this year, that if you ask the people of Salem, do they feel that money is spent well-spent? I suspect that many people would say that business as usual is not working, so it's time to try something different. So I have some questions about, about camping sites. So I've been looking at campsites, and as I mentioned last week, there are good camps and there are bad camps. There are bad camps out there that do not work and are not successful. And there are good camps out there that are successful and do help lift people out of homelessness once and for all and into services. What in your mind, Mr. Jones, is ideal in terms of how long a camping site should be available? Because I want to stress, I believe this is a temporary solution, and that as more beds become available, it makes more sense to encourage folks to direct them to those beds as best we can. So does it make sense, for example, to have a camping site for three months, or one month, or six months? I think different cities handle it differently. Now, obviously, I'm not suggesting that it's like a, you know, like, like a pop-up situation where it's there one day, and then all of a sudden it's taken down with no notice. I'm not suggesting that. I don't think any city staff has suggested that. I think that if this ban takes effect, anyone who's being told, "You can't camp here," should be told, "But you can camp there," so that they're not going, "Oh, my gosh, what do I do now?" No, they are told exactly where and when they can go. So I would think that'd be a part of it. So anyway, this is all a long way of me asking you in your, in your professional opinion, do you think it makes sense to identify sites that would be one month, three months, six months? Is there a, does it, is there a practice that makes the most sense that, on the one hand, balances the temporary nature of it, and on the other hand, is not so short-term that it uproots people who are trying to rebuild their lives?
Well, no one's going to like my answer to this, but what I would say, if you're going to do it, I would do it permanently. And the reason that I say that is that, that the only reason we would ever be interested in doing it was to provide a pathway to permanent housing. And so in two months, I'm not going to be able to house anybody out of that camp. It's going to take me two months to get enough trained workers out there to even begin to do the kind of work that we do to, to hand folks off to our regular housing programs or to H-RAP or something of that nature. So the longer period of time, even though I think there are some concerns about that, obviously, the longer period of time you would go, the greater that you would have the opportunity to actually make some impact on that beyond, as Counselor Anderson referred to, is just this concept of warehousing individuals. However, I would call everybody's attention to the fact that a long-term camp is going to be incredibly expensive. And the biggest problem that we face in homeless services nationwide is a concept known as opportunity cost. That is, when we choose to do something and we choose to fund something, quite typically and very frequently, we're not able to do something else, something else that have, might have much greater impact. So, you know, I don't know where this money would come from, or where it would come from in a long-term sense, but if it comes out of H-RAP, if it comes out of the city of Salem's CDBG Social Services Budget, the Fund Center for Hope and Safety, or St. Francis Shelter, if it comes out of the opportunity to maybe help provide staffing costs for Redwood Crossings, if it comes out of, you know, maybe the Sequoia Project that Ms. Utz and I have been working on for some time, to bring in additional 75 beds that we might be able to capitalize on those mainstream vouchers for. If it comes out of any of these other things that we're trying to do, you have to weigh and balance between what is effective and proven in terms of solving and ending homelessness, and what is simply a sort of stop-gap measure to address some, some problems that we really don't have another answer for. And I'll just tie that up with one, one little comment. So there are really only two approaches in homeless services. There are in, there's an approach that ends homelessness, and there's an approach that manages homelessness. And managing houses no one, it is incredibly expensive over the course of time, and it takes away resources from that other side. Now, I would never say, ever, that in a housing-first model or mentality, we should never have shelters or any of those managing pieces, because anybody who thinks that housing-first is not friendly to shelters doesn't understand housing-first. We desperately need those things. But we have to have a balance. Now, balance has to lend itself over time toward ending the problem instead of perpetuating it.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to go back to Ms. Hamilton. I don't think you got to answer the second half of the information that you had prepared for us regarding the cost of standing up warming shelters on the, on a long-term or seasonal basis. Could you, could you explain that to us, please?
Absolutely, I would love to. So currently, we operate a Salem Warming Network, which has around 300 warming shelter beds for the city of Salem through four site locations. There are inconsistencies in opening, because it's temperature-activated, as well as staffing schedules as far as volunteer shifts. And so that kind of lends itself to fewer beds because we can't open every shelter. However, a stop-gap measure, that's something that we can implement January 1st, is the addition of 140 beds by permanently opening, opening First Presbyterian Church and Church at the Park. So that means opening every single night for 30 days, the first 30 days of the year. And so that would be, I mean, 90 days, excuse me. So that's January, February, and March. And running our, our numbers, we'd be able to provide that service for about $213,000. And with that, we would kind of alleviate some of the volunteer, the volunteer need by bringing on 6.75 FTE and shelter representatives. And so these would be trained staff that can help facilitate the warming operations in conjunction with our wonderful volunteers, as well as a program assistant and a couple site coordinators at Church of the Park and First Presbyterian.
And the date, you can start up?
We can start January 1st.
Okay. Counselor?
And I'm assuming you've spoken with those two establishments, and they're interested and willing to do that?
We have. They have to go through some board approval at their church level, but they wanted to know how serious the, the inquiry was before they brought it to their board.
And remind me, or reiterate, maybe I missed it, what would be the impact on, on volunteers under that model?
Right. So currently, well, last year, for example, we opened 42 nights under that activation range of 32 degrees or below. We would be now moving to 90 days permanently from January 1st to March 30th, and that would be at two of our site locations. We would also still be trying to operate our, our Capital Park, yes, our Capital Park location and our South Salem Friends location at that 32-degree activation range. So we're still aiming for the four, but two would be operational each night.
Just to clarify, though, at all of the locations, or maybe you need to break it out, would it be volunteer-run like it is now, or you, because you mentioned staff?
Yes, absolutely.
So I was a little confused on what the mix would be.
Sure. There is a metric, a matrix of both shelter staff and volunteer staff at the warming center locations as-is, as well as on the suggested daily opening. And so it'd be contingent on how many volunteers sign up for that day shift, day shift, and just provided a little more reliance that we know staff are there.
Thank you. And just one final question. You mentioned January 1st. Is there any way to move that up?
That'd be contingent on the, the board of the First Presbyterian and at Capital Park, Church of the Park.
Thank you.
Counselor Nordike? Did you have any, no, okay, I'm sorry. Counselor Anderson?
Counselor Young hasn't spoken. I'll defer her. Then I have something to say.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. I had a few follow-up questions. Can you please tell us where the Church of the Park is located?
That is right next to Cascade Gateway Park, so it's east of the airport. Also, it actually backs up to the park there.
Okay. And another question I had for you is, as, as you know, currently, the camping ban is supposed to go into effect on Monday. My question is, if provided the church, both our churches are able to open up January 1st, are you going to be trying to do a heavy recruiting from those individuals who are currently camping in the other areas to try and go to those facilities?
Yeah, absolutely. We've opened a few days thus far this season, and we've seen a total of 728 unique visitors to our warming centers, and a nice chunk of them from per- And a nice chunk of them, from First Presbyterian, when I've interviewed them personally, actually came from the Arches facility. What we're seeing right now, there are some stragglers, because they're there staying behind and protecting each other's property, so they take turns. But I imagine quite a few would actually go to First Presbyterian and Church of the Park, because we'd be consistently open rather than relying on social media or word-of-mouth or other various means to figure out, is it 32 degrees, are they activated or not?
And for those individuals who end up staying at the churches, are they allowed to keep their stuff there?
They are, yes. They're encouraged to bring their possessions. For anyone with a large amount of possessions, like a huge duffel bag, multiple duffel bags or a grocery cart, we have pods stationed out front, so they don't even have to bring them into the facility. And then, there's an opportunity to bring smaller bags inside. And they can bring their pets and partners, low barrier.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see our discussion tonight as, really, there's three components that I could see. One is the temporary camping facility, the other is a permanent camping facility, the third one is what we just heard from Ms. Hamilton now about opening up the warming centers on a permanent basis for 90 days. So, I'm going to offer a motion on the temporary one, and then, depending on what happens...
Counselor.
I'm just going to lay out the sequence. I will offer a motion...
Oh, I'm sorry.
On a...
Thought you had a motion.
I do, but I'm just going to say I have that motion, then I will have a motion on the permanent, and then I think we can move to the third issue. And here's my motion. I move that staff move forward with all possible speed, using contingency funds to develop a designated overnight, 12-hour model, temporary-staffed camping area at Wallace Marine Park. The term of the camp to be until May 15, 2010, with a council review at its first meeting in April, excuse me, 2020, with a council review at its first meeting in April 2020.
Second.
So, if I may...
Second by Nordike.
If I may speak briefly to that. I understand that we have concerns about temporary versus permanent. I understand that we are limited in staff in terms of what we can do, which is why I think we ought to move forward with all deliberate speed on a temporary camp. I think that location is closest to services, in light of what we've heard about from Mr. Jones. I also see that there are problems with that area, and they relate to what the city manager has pointed out, that people use it in the warmer weather. I mean, I swim down there for swimming, families, et cetera. But I also see that it is the one that it seems to be the least away from residential areas while also being the closest to service. In general, you know, this problem is intractable, and it's beyond Salem to affect the overall systemic issues that have led us to this. But this at least gives us some place to offer folks who will be dispersed on the camping ban.
Counselor Young.
Can I just ask one question, Counselor Anderson? So, if you're going to have it at Wallace Marine Park, what happens when it floods there?
Well, I assume that I would leave it up to the staff to prepare in an area that was as out of the flood plain as could be. And I'm looking at the parking lot in that area, and I understand it floods at some point, but I think that's a risk we have to take.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Prior to Ms. Hamilton's last remarks, I was prepared to support a motion of a nature that she just made, Counselor Anderson. But I'm thinking now that it makes more sense to support the model that she just outlined. We can do it faster, we can do it cheaper, it's in a building. To me, it seems like it's got a lot of the benefits that the camping solution doesn't have, and we can do it right away. So, I'm thinking that that would be a better approach.
I join Counselor Hoy in that as well. I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure it out, because we were told optimal size for any of these, optimal, biggest, possible is 50. And I heard, how many are you saying?
140.
140. So, really, this represents three camps. And at a, you see what I mean? That's kind of my concern, is this scales so quickly that it actually kind of beats out almost anything we can come up with on the ground, and it gets people out of tents, does not subject them to weather or to flooding or to living in a tent if they want to move into these. And then, I think it's a question for the police department, too, as to how they will be, and you've asked them, how will they be performing their duties? I mean, you see the, does that...
Well, no, I don't disagree with that, and I agree with Counselor Hoy to the effect that that seems like a pretty good solution. But I also recognize that there are people, as Mr. Jones talked about, who won't use the church either. And so, the choice with those folks is to offer them someplace else or have them disperse into the areas that they were before.
But, but...
Let me just, if I may go on. My next motion would have been with respect to the opening the warming shelters from January to March. And to me, I would like to see both those together, but I also can understand the issues that the rest of the council, or at least two of you, have raised about this issue. And I would just as soon go ahead and vote on this. And either way, I'm going to either move or support the opening the warming shelters from January to March.
Yeah, I think the one issue you raised that I think is really concerning is you're going to have an intractable population that is just not going into the church. But I thought I also heard Mr. Jones say, "You also have a substantial population that will not move from the current camping situation into an organized or more organized camping site."
Well, I agree.
So, somebody's going to get tossed to the...
Oh, I agree, I agree. I mean, if, in fact, the people who are out there in front of Arches now say, "We don't want to move to any kind of organized camp," then we, the police, need to enforce the no-camping ban, or the camping ban.
Okay. Counselor Kaser.
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Hoy on this, until I heard Ms. Hamilton speak about the possibility of having 140 beds for 90 days, and possibly maybe even more if First Presbyterian and Church of the Park could pass some of their, get kind of their site together, I guess, in time. I mean, that sounds like a pretty good option there, a temporary solution. It doesn't mean that we couldn't move forward with a couple of other things, such as staff report on car camping, who'd be coming to the council, I think, I don't know when exactly, but hopefully, we could expedite that in some way, perhaps, to get it to like first council meeting of the year. So, we do some other things, but also perhaps continue on. It could, it could give the city time to come up with a more concrete way forward, and it might be a temporary camp. It might be the beginning of a low-barrier shelter. I don't know exactly, but if we're able to leverage this to buy us a few months of time, and at least to get people through the winter, that's, might not be a bad option. So, I kind of, at this point, I'm, since that is on the table and it has some numbers tied to it that are more specific, it seems like it might be a better way to go.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Ms. Hamilton or Mr. Jones. Do you have the capacity to do the expanded warming shelters and camping, or is it one or the other?
No, we don't. Right now, as I said earlier, we are so stretched everywhere, I can't, doing one is going to be a heavy lift, and doing both, I just don't think we could pull it off, especially in the timeframes that we're talking about. But I do think the car camping thing has real promise. We have about probably 400 individuals who are living in their cars all over town, and that's, that's an easier lift as a whole.
Thank you.
Counselor Young.
I have some issues with, if the, currently, as I mentioned earlier, the camping ban is set to go on Monday, but then, if provided that the churches, however long it takes, hopefully, no later than January 1st, approves, that will at least increase up to 140 beds. So, then, for those two weeks, two-ish, three weeks or so, let's just say that's what it takes, like, what are we going to do about those individuals who are going to be displaced by that? I mean, I just want folks to kind of take that into consideration. I mean, that is a major concern, too. I mean, while we're waiting for these other facilities to open, we're already going to be taking away people who are already vulnerable, who are already in a stuck place, say, "Get on, get out of here." But then, how are we going to then tell them, "Oh, now we have another place that's open"? We're already going to be eroding the trust with them by kicking them out, and then tell them, "Trust us, go to here."
Okay. Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I have just one last question for Mr. Jones, if I could, and it really goes to the heart of what Counselor Young just talked about. One of the concerns I've heard you talk about many is if you just all of a sudden outlaw camping, the campers are going to disperse. My question is, well, two questions, I guess. One, if that were to happen next Monday, how dramatically would that set back your operation and your goals? And why don't you go with that one first?
So, it's been a long six months, right? Going back to the summer when those camps in Wallace Marine were broken up, it changed our entire service environment, the nature of the work and scope of the work and the volume of the work that we were doing. I frequently and repeatedly suggested that there were going to be unintended consequences from doing that, and compounding that is that we have this problem every winter, so this winter, it's the Camp Around Arches, last winter, it was the Meals Under the Bridge, and the year before that, it was the Spiral. So, we see these seasonal migrations into town. We have pretty good information on where people are most of the time. I've shown several people on the council, the kind of maps that we keep with GIS information on where the, you know, the VAT population, the HRAP population is camping. So, you know, there are going to be people dispersed. And one of the things I worry more about than anything else is when we bust up camps, big or small, is that there's always the possibility that, you know, folks are just going to run out of places to go and then filter their way into residential neighborhoods, and that is a prescription for disaster for all of us. So, when the camping ban goes into effect, what people will do is they will scatter. It's really not going to set us back too much, because we have more than enough people to work with at the moment. I mean, you know, we have hundreds of individuals to serve.
If, one last question, I promise. If the scattering were to happen, would, would they return when there was facilities like what your offices talked about, or a temporary camping place? Will, or will they disperse so dramatically that it will take extended time to get them back?
Well, we're a little bit of an undiscovered country, in a way, because frequently when camps were broken up in the past, people tended to move on for a little while in a short distance, and they would return to the areas where they were. And we've seen a lot less of that. I can tell you that essentially, two things have happened after, since those external camps were busted up. It forced the majority of them internally into the city, closer into town. Some went deeper outside the urban growth boundary and are sort of on county property out there now. So, I suspect we're going to see a mixed result of that. Some will go farther away, but most will stay close, and almost all of them will eventually be drawn back into the city for resources and services.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a substitute motion.
Yes.
I move that city council authorize the city manager to turn to an agreement with Arches to provide expanded low-barrier shelter operations on a nightly basis, and authorize the city manager to expend funds not to exceed $213,000 to do so.
Second. Second by Kaser. Yes, go ahead.
Basically, it's Ms. Hamilton's proposal or kind of wrapped into a motion. I think we just, I think it's the fastest way that we can get to a solution. I think it's the lowest cost, and frankly, I think it's more effective than the other idea that we were looking at. So, I think it's a really great idea, and I hope people will support it.
Chief, what do you think? You want to weigh in at all on any of this yet? I know your voice was gone earlier.
Well, I think most everything's been said, but I want to make sure we don't gloss over the fact that any of these suggestions pose a great deal of difficulty. This is a tough, trauma-driven clientele, and I want to make sure that whether it's in Wallace Park or in a church, that we utilize best practices, and that is ensuring that there is safety and security for everyone that's involved there. We also talked about the amount of people that should be in a, could be in a camp, and I don't know if it's any different for those in a church or anywhere else. And suddenly, we've gone from maybe a cap of 35 to 40, to a cap of 140 people. And I think it's a recipe for disaster, given the issues that many of this clientele has, and I just want to make sure that we're thinking about those issues, because I think, I think there could be a variety of issues, given that situation.
I'm not sure I caught that cap idea. I thought what I heard was that there is a situation where a warming shelter will be, and shelters actually will be able to handle through staff and volunteers.
And if, and if that's the case...
That's, I think, what I understood.
I think that's great.
Yeah.
No, and I knew there was two locations, but you're talking 70, 80 people in each location, and that was my concern.
Yeah. I think, yeah, I hear what you're saying, and...
And if I, if I could, Mayor, I wanted to address something from much earlier in our discussion, and that was a complaint-driven approach by the police. And I think Counselor Anderson asked about reactive, and I just wanted to make sure that, because we had discussed this earlier today. If we receive a complaint of a camp downtown and we respond to it, yet there's another camp a half a block away that we haven't received a complaint on, we are certainly going to address that issue as well. I just want to make sure that's...
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Nordike.
Sure. Thank you. I am supportive of a project for any church or any private entity or nonprofit entity to help end homelessness, one person at a time. I don't think anyone on our council is opposed to the idea of having lots of people just address one person, 10 persons, 40 persons, 140 persons at a time, because when you have so many homeless, and we have a lot of homeless, it really does make a difference to have innovative and a multifaceted approach. So, I just want to point out, though, that this, this proposal might help 140 people, but we heard testimony earlier tonight that we have 1,000 campers. And with a designated camping area, instead of them scattering into the neighborhoods, they are told where they can camp. And to me, having a designated space means that they have a space where they can camp that will be safe for them, because it is security, because there will be safety, because there will be sanitation. Let's not forget that the current approach, we're seeing the numbers, we're seeing the sticker shock of what it would cost to run this program, but let's not forget the amount of money it has cost to not have this program. The alternative is not spending nothing. The alternative is expensive, too, and I would argue probably more expensive than what has been proposed before us. So, I just want folks to keep that in mind, that I do not want tent sites popping up in our neighborhoods. And I do want us to attack homelessness in a multifaceted way. One thing that we haven't talked about yet, because there just hasn't been enough time yet, of course, is working with private property owners for camping or to house the homeless. We have a lot of abandoned warehouses, big-box stores, private parking lots, et cetera, that we haven't had a chance to consider yet. I think we need a unified and a comprehensive plan for homelessness. And I think that what we're doing right now, and I really appreciate all my colleagues' comments tonight and all the comments from all of our experts this evening, is that we're having a conversation that I am so proud that we are having. And the fact that we're recognizing that there is no simple way out of this just goes to show that we are making an effort to address this issue, and we're overdue in doing so, and I'm glad that we are having this typical... And we're overdue in doing so, and I'm glad that we are having this typical conversation. So, I just wanted to say that I express gratitude in these moments because this is what you see as a seed of change. And so, this is an opportunity for us to actually lead on homelessness. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Question for the city attorney. Let's say that the substitute motion does not pass, then we go to the motion, the original motion, that does not pass. Would it be possible, under parliamentary procedures, for us then to revive the supplemental motion?
Yes.
Okay. Then, I move an amendment to the supplemental motion to change the date to as soon as possible, but no later than January 1st. And also to change the amount of money up to $250,000 as opposed to $213,000. Up to $250,000. I believe Counselor Hoy's motion was 213, which is the figure we got, but that could have been a back-of-the-envelope-type figure, and I'd rather have it a little more generous.
Okay. We're lacking a second. Okay, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I don't know if I want to do a third or what I want to call it. I'm in favor of Counselor Hoy's motion.
Okay.
But irregardless of what this may cost me, I would like to amend it to put off the implementation of the camping ban until, until these, these new facilities are open or January 2nd, whichever comes first.
I'm afraid that motion would be out of order. You've got an ordinance that's in effect, I think. You can correct me.
So, you already passed the ordinance and it goes into effect on December 16th. You, counsel, the only way you can amend that ordinance is by adopting another ordinance.
Okay, separately.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry. I, I think we all are kind of thinking that.
We're all making motions.
Okay? Your motion's still on the table, Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And actually, I have a couple of questions in the regards to that. Opening utilizing volunteers on a daily basis for 90 days is essentially what that temporary piece is. Our volunteer utilization currently, even if we're adding permanent staff at a cost of $213,000 approximately, which would be borne by the city of Salem, correct? Do we have concerns that opening every night, as compared to currently now, it's only when it drops under 32 and people are kind of, yes, no, yes, no? Are we going to get volunteer fatigue and are we going to have enough volunteers to actually man these sites? If we're not, we got permanent people that we're paying for that are not able to actually perform a function. Go ahead.
Before Mr. Jones addresses the specifics, the city is already helping fund, and might be the only funder of the warming center network. And to clarify Chief Moore's comment from earlier, having existing warming center sites is much more conducive to our response if there are behaviors that require a police response than yet-to-be-established or yet-to-be-located camp. We, as some counselors may know from volunteering at the warming centers, our police officers will come to the church locations if the paid staff, if the lead volunteers, the lead workers determine that law enforcement assistance is required. The opportunity to expand the warming center was discussed with Jimmy, Mr. Jones, between the time of counsel's motion last week and this evening. So I'm pleased that Mr. Jones and Ms. Hamilton were able to prepare some good figures for counsel's consideration. It was prepared as a response to counsel's concern regarding where can people go. I would suggest, if, again, thinking about what is counsel trying to achieve, if that is the goal you're trying to achieve, then the risk is, yes, there might be some evenings, some nights where that ratio is off and perhaps the money is not as well-spent. However, I believe that is a lower concern, given that goal of being able to, with certainty, tell individuals, you have a place to go. And it's at these four locations, it's warm, it's sheltered, there will be a police response if necessary. So they have a choice, which, under the current timeline, they would not have with the camping ordinance.
Okay. I think, are we ready to vote? I think we are.
Well, I had a question out on.
Oh, I'm sorry. What do you got?
So, in the most direct way I can say this, it's going to be a heavy lift. And, you know, we struggle to get adequate volunteers to maintain ratio every winter. This winter is no exception to that. It was the case last winter and the winter before that, and as long as we've been doing this because it is a very tough thing for volunteers to do because we're dealing with clients in enormous trauma states, many with people, many people have really, really severe mental health problems or, you know, in many cases, they're intoxicated when they come in. But one of the things this budget does in particular is provide more paid staff for each site, which does have day-in and day-out experience with dealing with these kinds of need levels. So, I'm going to let Ashley tell you just a little bit about the number of volunteers and the utilization rate there because I think you'll get more information, actionable information out of that than from me.
All right, thank you. Currently, we have over 450 volunteers signed up to participate in the Salem Warming Network. That's almost double the utilization that we saw last year. So we're onboarding volunteers at a skyrocketing pace. But with that, having a duration model provides consistency to the volunteer base. One of the feedback that we commonly get with a temperature-activated model is we go on standby, people sign up with best intentions to participate, but then the temperature's a little higher, higher than we thought, so we don't open. So that's a challenge. We lose a lot of volunteers through that unfortunate mechanism. And then also, with a duration model, people can sign up for consistent shifts. They can say, you know what, I can do Wednesdays for shift, absolutely, every second Wednesday. Or I can do every Friday night or opening every Thursday. So it provides a structure to a volunteer's schedule that is very much wanted. And so I do think we would see some positive feedback.
Kind of a follow-up on that. Would the typical clientele that would actually visit those sites, it save, it didn't even remotely get close to freezing. They do have other restrictions, things they can and can't do. They can't leave, they can't come back in. Would they utilize that location? And who would be utilizing it? Would the ones who are giving us the most trouble utilize that? I would think not, but what would overall utilization potentially, or how would it be affected by actual temperature?
So, I wish I had brought my need maps down to kind of show you what the need levels look like in Wallace Marine, for example, for the last three years versus the downtown. So the people who utilize the warming centers the most are the individuals who are camping, and by camping, I mean usually just with a blanket or sleeping bag pulled over them in the downtown. They're usually the folks with the highest mental illness, they're usually the folks with the biggest substance abuse challenge. And historically, the farther you moved out in kind of concentric circles from the downtown, you got people who would not tend to come in unless the weather got really, really bad. So when we moved from a 27-degree to a 32-degree model, there was a lot of concern expressed like, well, you're really not going to get them to come in. They won't use it. They, you know, will want to come in and out, you know, and that sort of problematic sets of behaviors associated with that thing. But we really haven't seen very much of that in this last year and a half now of using a 32-degree model. So even if we went to a duration model and let's say it's 45 degrees, one of the things you see when you're consistently open is that once a homeless population begins to use a warming center to sleep in at night, they tend to get acclimated to those conditions and tend to return to it over and over again. So I don't necessarily think we would see much of that, we would probably see some of that.
Okay. Everybody ready now? Why don't?
I need a restatement of the motion and any amendments that are in it.
There is no amendment. The motion is?
The motion was to direct the city, or authorize the city manager to work with Arches to expand our low-barrier shelters for a daily basis, on a daily basis, and authorize the city manager to expend funds not to exceed $213,000.
Okay.
Man, I thought there wasn't amendment.
No.
I did move, there was no second.
There was no second, so we're moving on.
Yeah. And before we do vote, I want to say that I'm in favor of both.
Sure.
So even if I vote against the substitute motion, I think it's a very good idea. But I really think we ought to look at opening a camping area and then go to the substance of the substitute motion.
I don't think this precludes that. I think what it does is bring the time in that we can get some people housed. There's nobody saying, and I thought that Counselor Nordike really summarized it pretty well, this is an ongoing discussion. It's a broad discussion. We're going to be looking at a variety of ideas. We've got some basic information now on these camping sites. We've got some timelines and some costs and can actually continue to work on those ideas, is my impression. This doesn't foreclose that. This just says, by January 1st, we're going to get some people into some housing. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I kind of wanted to follow up on something that was mentioned earlier about the December 16th ordinance.
Yeah.
You had mentioned something about doing an amendment or adopting, changing the ordinance to, that, that's not even?
Not on the table.
Unless you want to meet later this week?
Okay.
No, you've got a real problem there. It's really, it went by.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
I just wanted to be clear.
There's no way to get at it tonight. Yeah. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
And I want to announce that I've been persuaded by the council that we need to do something right away and this is sooner, so.
So nay is nanki. Motion passes.
Yes.
Okay. Excellent.
Now, Mr. Mayor, at the risk of prolonging this meeting, I got all excited on number 6A, and I had wished to call up item number 6B, and I don't know if we need to, if I'm allowed to go back and call that up?
Do you want to do a public hearing, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, why don't you just make a motion?
Okay, I move that we, we hold a public hearing on the planning administrator's decision and item number 6B.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Okay?
Well, I don't really know if I want, I mean, I think we need more staff information here. This is a development that has 48 separate conditions. That seems like a whole lot. And I noticed that some of them include, Counselor Nanki and I were discussing, there are some issues with getting on the other roads, exiting and coming in from other roads. And I also see some issues with 15% grade on the roads and some other issues about lowering the rideaway from 60 feet to 52 feet. And it just seems to me like we need a further public hearing of all these issues.
Counselor Nanki?
Similarly, I had some questions just about access in and out, how we might control that. The bulk of those are repetitious because they're looking at potentially do multiple phases and it would be in logical order so that the roadways all connect.
Okay.
It, I suppose a question would be, is that highly out of the ordinary as far as the number of conditions and, and what they're trying to do here?
Hi, Lisa Anderson, we'll be the planning administrator. Whenever they do phase subdivisions, then yes, there's lots of conditions because they're repeated, because each phase needs to exist on its own. And this is a very large subdivision, 212 lots. So I don't think 48 conditions is an extraordinary number for the size of the subdivision.
Yeah, I don't necessarily know if I support a motion to call, we talk about affordable housing all the time. They're going to have to bring in all their people and they're going to actually, their costs go up, there's going to be attorneys that are making a couple hundred bucks an hour sitting in here. I do have issues and concerns with the roadways. I'm assuming Public Works has looked at them.
Well, let's not hold the hearing tonight. Let's decide. Really, let's decide.
But as far as just the questions that are out there regarding the development.
Well, we all read the recommendation and if counsel wants a public hearing, I'm sure, I sure don't have a problem with a public hearing, those are always interesting. Okay? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Now, we'll go to second readings.
Ordinance Bill Number 1319 and ordinance repealing SRC Chapter 48 relating to plastic carryout bags, SRC 48.010 through 48.060. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osick's absent. Counselor Hoy?
Present.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Or the ordinance, whatever it is. Pass.
Ordinance Bill. Ordinance Bill Number 1519 and ordinance relating to land use, amending the Salem zoning map for a portion of land located within the Oregon State Hospital Historic District and amending SRC 230.058, .064, and 200. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osick's absent. Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye.
Okay. Final public comment, I have one person who's, who would like to speak to you, Delana Beaton.
I think you have seconded.
Or he did one.
I did one, it's on the agenda item. It's a non-agenda item.
Okay. Get behind Delana. Three minutes, please.
I won't need three minutes on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to speak to Counselor Kizer's question earlier, but it was not an appropriate moment for someone from the public to speak. You asked if there were no nonprofits or other groups wanting to participate actively and try to be helpful in this effort to help house and manage the needs of our major homeless. I'm president of a nonprofit called Home Based Shelters of Salem. We've existed in Salem, it'll be five years in February. We have been here throughout, trying to think of some way to be helpful. We've presented a couple of proposals that have not been well-received. What we have become de facto is an adjunct to the Arches Project. All of us have literally, we've logged our hours. We, all of us have many thousand, literally, of hours working voluntarily. We know this population, we know many of them by name, we know their individual issues. I'm not saying we know every one of the 2,000 out there, but we know a lot of them. So as a team, we would be, I think, an effective volunteer force to be assigned whichever model is followed. So, I just wanted to know, there were people out here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Sturba, thank you, Delana. I think, I just, just as an aside, if anyone is interested in this small camp or 50, 40, 50, this is the right, this is a very good person to talk to. Delana has done a lot of work in this area and can help with what it looks like to put this together, so. Okay, Ron?
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. What I have is, I want a new law here in the city. An example, I am at a traffic light, four cars back from the light, it's red. And all of a sudden, the light changes and the car in front of me goes, and I decide to go, too. He slams on the brake, I slam on the brakes, and I'm going, what's going on? Well, the guy in the first car is hanging out the window, trying to give money to a person who's on the corner. That's a distracted driving law, and I think the city of Salem should have it. Now, here's the big one at Turner Road in Mission. I'm stopped at the traffic light, there's a caravan car in front of me. The guy stops the car, gets out of his car, comes over, takes a case of food out of the side of his car and gives it to the person, standing on the traffic island. Then the person starts checking to see if it's expired food. Now, the next step I want to take here is Oregon State Lottery should have scratch-off tickets. And these scratch-off tickets would be winnings that would go to four months of housing or healthcare or. of housing, or health care, or hair care, or free clothing, or free dinners. And those could go to the cities throughout the whole state. I think the state of Oregon has a responsibility in every community. Those are my ideas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Skirba. Seeing no further business, we are adjourned.